See if that works for Suzy.
Okay, so according to Jason, Jonathan is in the 7:00 PM public meeting right now. And he needs to be let in.
Okay, I think we're gonna have to do that for others too that.
Deirdre also need the closed session one?
She may, can you send that to her?
In a separate email?
In a separate email, I'm gonna send the public link.
I just sent the webinar link to Deirdre, I'll send her closed session one privately.
Oh, you sent her the webinar one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Sarah and Elizabeth Michelle texted that the webinar won't let her in. Hey.
Oh, Deirdre's in.
I just told that.
Good, Deirdre. Deirdre, I'm sending you the closed session.
Hey Elizabeth, can you send me the meeting ID for the panelists?
It's individual when Sarah creates the meeting and it's automatically sent from Zoom. So we're inviting people as attendees and promoting them to panelists. Sue Vatterlas, will you have video during this meeting?
I shall not.
Alright.
We're live now, we're on PCT. For the pictures.
If we're live?
Are we going off this and then on to another one? Or are we staying on this?
No, you go off this one, you actually have to leave this, then sign on to the other one.
Oh, good luck, thanks.
Using that link.
And Deirdre, if we are live, can we confirm with the clerk if we're live?
We are.
Then.
Yes, we're live, so we're ready to read the closed session item and ask for any public comment.
Okay.
Great, closed session item this evening, July 13th, 2020, City of Pacifica City Council Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure Litigation Pursuant to the Government Code Section 54956.9 D2E1, one case. I would like to see if there's any public comment on this item. And I'm looking in the panelist attendees, now would be the time to raise your hand, use the raise hand function. And I don't see any. With that, I will close public comments and we will resume, we will go into our other session, our closed session, and then we will come back to this Zoom screen.
We're journeying, we're journeying into closed session and we will be back after closed session to open the regular meeting.
What City Attorney said, thank you.
Alright, we will see you.
Okay.
Do we?
City Clerk? Sarah?
Yes.
Can you tell them to start streaming?
Will do.
Now we are. Now it's go, we're on there.
City Clerk, are you good?
We can go ahead.
Alright, great, welcome to the City of Pacifica City Council Meeting of July 13th. It is 7:09, I will open the meeting this evening, any closed session report?
No reportable action?
Okay, great. Our call to order and roll call.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Vatterlas?
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Will be joining us shortly, I'm assuming.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Here. We will have the salute to the flag led by Councilmember Beer.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, and I see Mayor Protem Beckmeyer is here now. Okay, we will move to the consent calendar. Are there any, are there any council members that would like to pull any items from consent? I don't see any hands raised and Councilmember Vatterlas, because you're not on video, you will have to verbally flag me down. We have, oh, Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, yeah, can I, can I pull number 11?
Number 11, okay, and then I'm going to check with the public. We have one hand raised, and I will, that hand has been raised by Sunil Bot to see if there's anything that he'd like to pull from the consent calendar.
Mr. Bot, are you raising your hand to pull or speak on any items on the consent calendar?
So we should lower that hand, Sarah?
Yep.
Okay, great, so do I have a motion for?
So, so move to approve the consent calendar minus number 11.
Second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlas?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And the consent calendar minus item 11 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Great, thank you. So, Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it would be possible to explain the slurry seal to the public, to explain this project to the public, Kevin, is that possible?
Yes, absolutely, and I can have Public Works Director Lisa Peterson or Deputy Director Bautista explain it in more detail. But what I'll say about a slurry seal project, which this is, this is a project that the council approved last year, and with our, with our street resurfacing money, and in combination with the reconstruction of some segments of street. Slurry seal is a coating on top of the street that helps maintain and preserve the quality of the street, so it doesn't deteriorate as fast, and that's all I'll say, and I can, I can turn it over to Director Peterson.
Thank you very much, so I think I would probably just pass this on to Deputy Director Bautista to talk about, because he did put this project together. But again, basically, a slurry seal is something that we're putting on the streets in order to keep our streets that are in better condition, in good condition, to keep those staying in good condition. It also gives us an opportunity to do additional striping on the streets, in this case, there's gonna be some added bicycle lanes, and with that, I'll let Deputy Director Bautista discuss this a little bit more.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lisa. Councilmember Beer, your question regarding slurry seal, as City Manager Kevin Woodhouse and Director Lisa Peterson said, it's a, slurry seal is pretty much a coating, a thick coating on the existing pavement, and what we do is we end up sealing the cracks, and making sure that all the vegetation is out of those cracks, and then we put this, the, this coating, which is, you know, emollients, and it's, it's thick emollients with sand mixed together, and it, it will tote the whole entire surface, and it would, it would fill up all those cracks, and then we would go ahead and do the restriping, which includes the bike lanes along Terranova and, and Oddstad Boulevard, and, you know, the, this year's project, the limits are on, let's see here, it's, it's on Oddstad Boulevard from Terranova Boulevard to its northern end, as well as Terranova Boulevard from Bassler Avenue to Oddstad Boulevard. So that's the extent of the project. We are also doing slurry seal on Peralta from Crestview Drive to Lindemar Boulevard. So I hope that gives you a brief description of our project, thank you.
It does, thank you so much.
If I could just add, I think what's notable about this project is we took the opportunity to have some bid alternatives to add to the project, and because of a good bid result, we were adding those alternatives, and that's what allows us to stripe the bike lanes in accordance with our bicycle and pedestrian master plan on this, so it's a very efficient way to achieve multiple benefits.
And so just so the public understands why I asked, is because I've been answering a lot of emails and talking about the slurry seal and the bike lanes, and so I really wanted the public to understand that these are gonna be happening on Terranova Boulevard and Oddstad and Peralta. So I just wanted to make it real clear, so everybody hears that, and not just from me through an email, but from, from you all, so thank you for letting me pull the item.
And this awards the contract for that, so it is definitely being done.
Okay, great.
I have a question, is, Sam, will this be able to be done before the schools open? Because I know the high school district's probably not gonna, is opening virtually, but would this be done so that traffic, you know what I mean, when traffic starts again at the schools, it's not interfering with it?
It should be done probably, hopefully by October, so if, you know, during, during the course of construction, we'll have traffic control, and definitely if the school happens to be open, they will direct traffic, and we'll also send out notices to, you know, the school and make sure that we coordinate with the school so that they understand that there's going to be traffic delays and to let their students, that they can sign accordingly.
Okay, thank you. So unless there's other comments, I'll make a move to approve item number 11.
Also, can you please take a roll call vote?
Just to be clear, the second was by which council member?
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Thank you. And for the vote on item number 11, Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlas?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And agenda item number 11 passes with a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Mayor?
Yeah, I have some house cleaning to do before, before we move on, can I do that first, because I don't want to?
I just wanted to say, mention item 15 is dropped.
Those are a few things I need to do right now. Thing is to make sure that everybody knows that about our meeting format, and I apologize, I'm in a new space, so I don't have my regular setup, I'm on a dual, a single screen tonight, so if I'm a little bit slower, that is why. This evening, the meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-25-20 and N-39-20, which suspends certain requirements, the Brown Act pursuant to the order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County dated June 17th, 2020, as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. It is not physically open, city and council, city council members and staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. Public can observe and participate in the meeting while sheltering at home via Zoom link provided in the agenda, or by phone to the dial and number and webinar provided in the agenda. If you are viewing this at home, you can livestream it on our local TV channel 26, or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation via Zoom. For members of the public participating by computer or smartphone using the Zoom link, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications, it's usually right next to your name, when I call on the agenda item. So for those participating by phone, use star nine or asterisk nine to raise your hand to request to speak. City Clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after calling you by screen name or the last digits of your phone number, so you'll need to know the last few digits to your phone number. You will then be prompted to speak and allow up to three, allowed up two, three minutes, or on the time limit imposed by the mayor's discretion, and what we usually do is look to see how many participants we have to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. Please state clearly your full name for the record at the start of the public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during this meeting, but written public comments received by 4:00 PM today have been made part of the written record and will be provided, have been provided to City Council prior to this meeting, and posted to the city's website on the City Council Agenda's webpage for public reference. Emails will not be monitored for public comment during this meeting, so if you wish to make a public comment during the meeting and have not submitted a comment writing by 4:00 PM today, please join via Zoom today. Rules of decorum, I don't know if we really need to go into this, just sort of be civil and pay attention to the timer, because I don't want to have to cut you off, and I will. So with that, I also wanted to mention, thank you, Councilmember O'Neal, that item number 15 will be removed from this evening's agenda. So we will move on to oral communications. Oral communications, you will, now is the time to speak on anything that is not on the agenda this evening, so if there's an item on the agenda that you want, are here to speak about, wait until that agenda item comes up. If it's not on the agenda, raise your hand right now, it's right next to your name, there's a hover over your name and it'll say raise hand, okay? So please go ahead and do that now, we want you to raise your hand now, and, and so we can call on you by name or the last four digits of your phone number, last few digits. And let's see, we will allow you three minutes to speak, I think, Elizabeth Brooks, are you gonna be monitoring this?
Yes, I will.
Okay, I will hand it over to you.
We'll hear first from Chris Redfield, I'll allow you to talk, please state your name for the record.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right, I just want to say good evening, I wanted to thank, I wanted to welcome Director Peterson to the City of Pacifica, and I'd also like to thank Councilmember Beer, Director Bautista, and Mr. Kevin Woodhouse for the slurry seal update on that. I'd like to say good evening to Staff and Council, I want to thank you for getting us to this point in time on the oversized vehicle issue. There's not much road to kick the can anymore, roads have been defined. I want to thank Mr. Marquez in Engineering, Paul the Quirks on the staff, Chief Stidle for the department's never-ending challenges on this, and Kevin Woodhouse for the immense managerial challenge. Council has a monumental decision ahead on the 15th. You know, all of you are up to speed right now. Many have worked long and hard to manage this issue. We have all met, we have all debated, we have all deferred hard decisions. No decision is easy. No decision is without consequences. Here we are, after long and careful thought, I support what will be presented on Wednesday. You've been buried in negative blowback from agenda public. Welcome to Pacifica. I urge Council to take the leap of faith and move forward with the staff recommendations on Wednesday. Information to the public and good management of policy going forward are crucial. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we'll hear from Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore, I want to thank city staff and council for recent efforts to hold two special meetings important to Pacifica. The Racism, Policing, and Use of Force Study Session, and the Wednesday Special Meeting to Discuss the Homeless Parking Permit Program. These are difficult but crucial concerns for public discourse. Each of these issues have similarities that. Each of these issues have similarities that increase the challenge. First, the problems are of long duration and expansive time lends to a sense of normalization of the issues or a sense that they will always exist and can't be solved. Second, viewpoints on these issues develop when we're young and those core beliefs are often unconscious, but may be responsible for responses, reactions and current decisions we all make. And of course, change is often threatening. Here in Pacifica, we can see how these challenges are demonstrated through an intolerance of opinions in social and public media, through a proliferation of fear, through delays in public discussion of unbiased fact based data to counter misinformation. Mediators advise us to utilize certain tools for moving forward. One tool is to identify what the community values that is in common and use that as a starting point of discussion. Another tool is to create a space for active listening and respectful discourse. And while acknowledging that core beliefs are difficult to change, we can nevertheless move forward as we develop relationships of mutual trust. We've started that most difficult first step and opened the doors for community discussion. We should adopt a timeline for further discussion and goal setting. We may want to consider outside resources like mediation through Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. Discussions on equity in housing, in reducing use of racial profiling by our police, in changing media techniques to welcome civil discourse, these discussions can be transformative. Recent demonstrations suggest that the right time to proceed is now. Thank you.
Okay, I do not see any other hands raised. I do now. See. Now, this is the time to transfer public comments. So if your item is on the agenda, then just hold off on that. Okay. So Elizabeth?
Sure. Next, we'll hear from Anita Reese. State your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Anita Reese and I'm the Executive Director of the Pacifica Resource Center. And I just want to thank the city and the community again for your ongoing support while we continue to have to respond to the challenges that COVID has on our on our neighbors and our residents. So our office continues to be open to the community and we've returned to our regular business hours. We are however limiting our office space when our office space is open to the public and will be closed except by phone Mondays and Tuesdays from four to five. Wednesdays from nine to 10, there's no change to, I'm sorry, Wednesdays and Thursdays from nine to 10. And there's no change to our Friday hours and we're always available by phone. Our core services during the shelter in place continue to be groceries, housing assistance and services for unhoused families and individuals. We're also actually in the process of starting our back to school program right now. For sure, we need backpacks and beyond that, we're still trying to figure out the core supplies that we'll need. So I'll definitely give you all updates for that. We're looking to do distribution mid August before school starts. Groceries continue to be delivered by, to seniors and at risk families. And then we still have our drive through distribution on Wednesdays in the parking lot at the American Legion Hall at 555 Buell. So folks who are signed up in advance will have a scheduled distribution time and anybody else can stop by and pick up groceries at 3:30 and we'll do our best to get them groceries as quickly as possible. The other issue around housing assistance is really important, especially as the moratorium on evictions is scheduled to expire on July 28th unless it's renewed. So if anybody is having a difficult time paying their rent or are concerned about being able to pay their August rent, we ask that folks give us a call or email or visit our website so that we can start the online application process to try to get those, those funds out as quickly as possible. We've also hired a new case manager, but we are still recruiting for our two outreach specialists for unhoused on the coast outreach work. The job announcements can be found on indeed.com. We are hoping to fill those positions by the end of the month. And then lastly, the deadline to complete the census has been extended until October 31st. Enumerators will begin reaching out in person to those who haven't completed the census early next month. So if you haven't completed the census yet, please go online at 2020census.gov or by phone 844-330-2020. We need everybody counted. And if anybody needs help completing their census, they're welcome to contact PRC. We are one of the question assistance areas.
Thank you, Anita.
Next, we'll hear from Kimberly Williams. State your name for the record.
Hi, this is Kimberly Williams. And this is kind of a comment question. I'm not sure if you're aware, but I've noticed that you say that we should be able to see our hand raised next to our name, but what I'm seeing and maybe what the other public is seeing is I'm not seeing any participants or my name or anything. All I see is the hand icon and I can't tell when someone has their hand raised or if I'm muted or unmuted. So there's something about the settings that you have currently going that are not allowing the public to see that, including how many participants are on this webinar. So I just wanted to point that out that it's a little confusing.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yes, next we'll hear from the Bigler family. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Erica Bigler. And excuse my ignorance or being unprepared, but I was made aware of this meeting very late in the game. And I'm calling, I'm stressing my concern. I believe it's what it's, you're calling the parking permit. Is that about the RVs being parked on the street? Or is this a totally different matter? And we're going to discuss that later on the agenda.
That, you can talk about that tonight if you like, because it's not on the agenda, but we're having a whole separate meeting on that Wednesday night. So you may be at the wrong meeting.
Okay, okay. So I will just stay muted and I will come back on, I will listen to the rest of your meeting, but I will hold my question until Wednesday, if that's appropriate for you guys.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we'll hear from Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Good evening, Honorable Council and Mayor. I am Tiger Jazz Trolls, Big Stick of Pacifica. And I will issue a comment or two about the permit parking program. First, I want to echo Chris Redfield's welcome to Director Peterson. It's good to have you in our city. And then after that, I've been going back and forth with myself over the last few days. All sorts of thoughts have occurred to me in terms of and it's hard because it's such a heated discussion that's been going on and a part of me wants to be clever and a part of me wants to say things about various personalities and make some sort of witty comment and maybe even being insulting to a point. And I think what it all boils down to at the end of the day is there's some part of me that hears certain things and reads certain comments and really just wants to tell everyone to do better. And then the second I simplify it to that point in my own mind, it occurs to me, well, everyone's doing the best they can do. And I may not agree with that. I may vehemently not agree with that. But at any given point in time, everyone's doing the best that they can do. So at that point, I'm trying to kind of let go of that that feeling of mine to try and put in that kind of feedback. And you know, it all stems from the fact that we really can't disprove a negative. And a big chunk of what's been going on revolving around this topic has to do with people kind of utilizing their own imagination to a point, I think, because there really hasn't been that much information available. And my understanding is with the best intentions and for the best results from those participating in that process, there's not been a lot of information given because they were trying to get it done the best way they knew how. But what that has done, on the other hand, is give rise to a lot of people's imaginations, which I don't think has been particularly helpful. So what it all boils down to is I'm really happy that I get to read actual facts finally after all of this. And there's what the program is being as proposed. And presumably y'all can amend it as you see fit. But what we have now at the end of this long process, you know, we had one information session where it was real info. And now we have an actual factual basis for what this program will be. And unfortunately swirling around is this other milieu to have to dig through of what are not facts, but are a lot of heated emotions which need to be addressed to a point. And I'm hoping that a part of the way that will be addressed is by rising to the point of the factual basis that has now been expressed and we can hopefully have a healthy and helpful dialogue on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, I will close public comment and move on to council communications.
I'll start. Okay, um. I went to the CK, the City and County Association of Governments Legislative Meeting. The most interesting fact there was that six assembly members have COVID-19 and five staff members. So instead of going back in session on the 13th, they are waiting and not going in session at all. At the city and county meeting on the regular meeting, we discussed our regional housing allotment numbers and how the total was developed for the region. The region has nine counties, so it's a large area. And the numbers are two and a half times what they were in the past. But they did go through all of their allocation metrics, which include jobs and transportation and hazard areas. There are a lot more items involved in the numbers this year. These are the numbers that tell us how many houses we should build in the next five year cycle. If it's two and a half times what it was before, that will be approximately 1,000 houses that need to be built in Pacifica in the next five years. And that's, we won't know that until next year. I went to the Association of Area Governments. They also discussed those numbers. Today I attended the flood sea level rise and mainly they talked about budget. Three times the elected officials. I'm on the recovery committee for the county, which is interesting because there are many, many groups involved. We have a schools group. We have an equity group. We have a food group. And it's really important that people understand that we are working on the recovery and that it's going to be difficult and that things should be better in the end than they are now or than they were in the past. I, dear to the sustainability awards on Friday night, we did get an award for reach codes. And that was great. I also want to say that from Friday through today, I counted 60 emails, which does not include next door, on a variety of topics. Understand that as much as we all try to answer everyone and everyone's emails, it's not always possible. Because 66 is a lot of emails and a lot of them were today. A lot of them happened while we're in the meetings. And that we don't always, we're not always able to get back to people. We understand your concerns, even if it's not our current top concern. We do understand that, that you're having an issue right now and we'd like to help you. We can't always help you at the moment. And that things in government take time. So that's enough for me today.
Thanks, Sue. Go ahead. Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you for participating tonight, everybody who has attended. I really appreciate it. I really do. I want to thank the Pacifica Police Department and city staff for closing the beaches and doing the best they could to enforce the social host ordinance this year on 4th of July. We all know it was crazy. It was crazier than I've ever seen it and it was crazy everywhere. So I want to thank the Pacifica Police Department very much for all the work they've done. And then I want to thank the Pacific Beach Coalition and all the volunteers from the booths for cleaning up our city. So thank you so much for that. And Sue, all those meetings you attended, it makes me feel like I haven't done anything because most of our meetings, most of the meetings that I usually attend aren't meeting right now. The Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission is actually meeting tonight, so I couldn't be there. Or actually, sorry, they're meeting Wednesday night and that's why I couldn't be there. I attended the Pacifica Resource Center Board Meeting and as you heard Anita earlier, the Pacifica Resource Center is doing an amazing job at adjusting their services to help people with groceries and rents and taxes and core services during the pandemic. So we thank them so much. I wanted to address one strand of information that was going around about the Resource Center and the COVID-19 funding dedicated to cover the hotel costs for folks that are ineligible for the county non-congruent, non-congregant, oh, I can't pronounce that word, for the county shelters. There was information that like all of the hotels were filled with homeless people and that just isn't true. There was never a whole hotel in Rockaway rented for this. In April, there were four rooms and in May, there were five rooms. And all the folks have been out of the inn since 6/4. To date, they have housed 14 families and households at the inn or at America's Best Value Inn. Of those six are housed, including two who are moving into an apartment and two are in congregant shelter. And currently there's four rooms at America's Best Value Inn. So I just wanted to clear up some information about that. And on a personal note, many of you saw the article that was in the Tribune saying that I had returned to council and obviously I am here at council. I had originally asked the Tribune not to publish that article and to give me a few weeks because I'm actually only back quarter time. And that really matters to me because I want everyone to understand that obviously our health is the most important thing we have, right? And so I have to make sure that I'm taking care of that so that I can serve you. And going off of what a council member Vado said, there's so many emails. So if I haven't been able to answer your emails, it's because the most of the time that I'm spending in my quarter time back is here tonight and preparing to be here tonight. So I have been doing my due diligence, trying to answer as many emails as I can without going against my doctor's orders. So I just wanted to make that really clear. And that's it. Thanks. I, do we, there you are. Okay.
Here I am. Yes, it's been a challenging technology evening for me so far, but I'm here now. So I'm going to quickly speak before I go away again. I have been very busy with interfacing with small business people in Pacifica over the last several days. Today was a giant spate and flurry of additional communications due to the governor's order today. And so the constantly changing picture and landscape for our small business people is really creating some significant challenges. And challenges for our small business people are challenges for our town. So I'm hoping that we can work through some of the issues that are particularly vexing around how to get outdoor seating established. We often hear through, you know, various means and in different issues with different issues as they come up. Well, everyone's doing it and every other city is doing it and why can't we do it? And it is challenging. We've got to work through the process. There are safety considerations. There are issues with having public seating in the public, I mean seating in the public right of way. And I'm just really hoping And I'm just really hoping that we can streamline our processes within the city as much as possible to afford our small business people the opportunity to stay in business because they are really hanging on by a thread. So I'm very grateful to see the amount of support that our Pacifica residents are giving to our small businesses. I hope that will continue. I will certainly keep doing everything that I can to support that. And there are a number of additional meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks. One of which I'll be attending is the MTC, which I forgot what MTC stands for, but ABAG Area Association of Bay Area Governments Meeting, which is going to be talking about our Bay Area Plan 2050. And it's very much tied in with our housing. We will be receiving arena allocation for our regional housing requirements in Pacifica. We don't have that yet, but this is all background information leading to our ability to meet the goals under our arena allocation. So I'm trying to equip myself with that knowledge and that understanding so that I can be the best advocate on council and among other governmental agencies for bringing housing to Pacifica. That seems to be sort of underlying a lot of what our current struggles are around unhoused and a lot of the emails that we've been receiving lately. So these are the focus, the two focal points I've primarily been focusing on and just trying to get through the email. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. Mike, you're up.
Hi, everybody. Most of the meetings I go to are after this, so I don't have a lot probably till August. Big announce, too, just reminder that tax day is this Wednesday. So be sure to mail in both your federal and state taxes by then. One, two, the high school district has decided to open virtually for at least the first six weeks. So just kind of news to everybody that the traffic will stay more moderate than it has been in the past. And second, I'd like to thank all the people council member Mary Beer talked about with Beach Coalition, everybody else over the July 4th. It was especially bad this year. And I did get a chart of, it was bad everywhere, okay? In all the cities, the ones with fireworks, the ones without fireworks, legals, illegals, everything. So it was bad everywhere. But I also wanted to do a thank you to the mayor, who I think has done a very good job communicating to people the different issues and everything else we've done. And when I saw the, the email go out saying mayor closes beaches, I was sitting there thinking, oh, God, I'm glad I'm not the mayor right now. So I just wanted to thank you because I think you have done a very good job in communicating and doing the decisions about that. So just say thank you to that. And to staff, too. I mean, they're working it also, but I just think Deirdre has done a good job with that. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, 4th of July was, was what felt like a Herculean effort to get our beaches closed, which 99.9% of residents were extremely thankful for. And I want to thank Public Works, the Pacifica Police Department and city staff who managed to just turn on a dime and get things done. I mean, it doesn't happen easy. You have to print signs. You have to put out, you know, make sure that people read the signs and make them visible. And, and then there was enforcement. So I want to thank everyone for cooperating. I, I didn't see a huge amount of people turning around at Lindemar, which is what I expected all weekend, and that was wonderful. We had Caltrans on board for the most part, but it, it felt like, and, and just trying to get the word out beyond Pacifica because it wasn't the Pacificans that, that, you know, were going to be issued. But so anyway, thank you. And I want to remind everyone that we are not out of the woods. If, if you're paying attention to the COVID-19 situation, we are still on a high alert. And San Mateo County is doing a really good job. I see 99.9% of the people masked up in San Mateo County, and I think that has done us well. Let's just continue to stay the course and just make sure that we are being mindful of each other. And thank you. I, so 4th of July cleanups went well. And just a reminder, they're still going on. So if you haven't done your cleanup, please do your cleanup. Thank you. Yeah, Sustainable San Mateo County Awards on Friday night was great. And I want to thank, we, so we won of the Fast Track Award. What that means is that we, we put forth an ordinance that was, that, that fast-tracked our building codes. And we went even above and beyond what the minimum requirement for California is. And that's extraordinary. I want to thank our planning department for being so on top of it. In particular, Joshua Montemayor and Bonnie O'Connor and Tina Wermeyer. Tina did a great job with the video and then it was, it was a fun night. I was in my car listening to it most of the time. And, and it was great. So thank you, everyone. Something to really be proud of, really, really be proud of. We, we do lead, we do lead the county in, in a lot of things and environmental sustainability is one of them. So thank you. I wanted to let everyone know that since we agreed to sign on to the mayor's pledge, the Obamas, my brothers' keepers, I have since signed on. And we are sort of awaiting the next steps on that. But, but Kevin Woodhouse, our city manager and city staff are sort of working out what, what those checkpoints will be and how that will look like. So sort of stay tuned. And, and along those lines, we also will be working on the policing discussions that we have opened up for community engagement. I also wanted to let everyone know that we have received a petition to remove the portal statue on Highway 1. And we've got a significant amount of, of sign-ons for that. We are trying to figure out how many are actually from Pacifica. And I've just recently discovered that there has been significant vandalism to what is called the Bay Discovery Site up on Sweeney Ridge, which is really unfortunate. So I'm just making a plea to everyone to let us have a community discussion about this before you make any decisions for the community. This is a really important discussion to be had, to be had for everyone. And we are talking, the city is talking with the right folks from the right tribes to make sure that we gather and together as a community. So thank you and just, just be patient. I, I just want to echo what all the other council members said. We are getting hit, nailed with things that are super important to you and super important to us. But we are prioritizing by the hour at this point, by the hour. So please just be patient. If we don't get back to you this week, we will get back to you next week. And, or the week after, but we're, we're really tackling this stuff. Again, like governor issues something at noon, all hands are on deck for the next six hours, right, Mayor Protem? So thank you. And if no one has anything else, I will move on. Great. So let's move on to staff communications. Kevin?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Martin May Protem Beckmeyer and council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. As was mentioned, I'll start out about the governor's new order. You know, everyone is seeing across the state and across the country this pretty dramatic increase in cases. So as the mayor said, we're definitely not out of the woods and things still rapidly change. So the governor's new order today is a little bit, I think he used the term dimmer light switch on the reopening. And we're looking at that and the ramifications it may have on city operations. But from the initial look at it, it really, I think, primarily in Pacifica is going to relate, as Mayor Protem Beckmeyer said, to restaurants and the inability to do any of the inside dining. And so I encourage restaurants to look closely at the, the state order and any information that we discern, we will put on the city's coronavirus homepage on the website. I'll stop there on coronavirus-related announcements. And I'm excited, what I'm excited to do right now is actually announce Public Works Director Lisa Peterson, who is just starting her second week with us. And she had a great first week. My understanding is getting onboarded. She'll continue that process. And Lisa has over 25 years of experience in Public Works. Most recently comes to us from the town of Los Gatos. And she is, I know, extremely excited to join the Pacifica team to hit the ground running on the many complex issues that we are working on. And I know from her past, she's incredibly committed to her profession in Public Works. She's incredibly committed to public service and to local government excellence. And all of this combined, along with Deputy Directors Baptista and Son and the whole Public Works staff is going to be great for the city of Pacifica. So I'm going to stop there and turn it over to Director Peterson and have her say a few words.
And thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Yes, I just want to reiterate, I am very excited to be part of the Pacifica team and be serving this community in this beautiful city. It was an honor to be selected for this position. And I am looking forward to working with the council, the community, and also staff on upcoming opportunities that I'm sure we're going to find and also future challenges that the city may face. So thank you very much. And that's it.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Very welcome.
And that completes my comments.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was a consensus on council to ask staff to come back with a proposal to put fireworks on the ballot in November. I think that the, this year it was just so bad that I think we need to put a yay or nay on it to the public. And the reason I'm asking for a public vote is that twice previously, citizens have voted yes, they want fireworks. So I'm very reluctant to have the council, you know, stop something that the public has said no to or yes to twice. So I'm just asking the council if they want to ask staff to bring that forth. And maybe talk, discuss the timeline to do that.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that in terms of a timeline. And I know City Attorney Kenyon will also say something. The, the deadline to put a measure on the ballot is Friday, August 7th. So practically speaking, and that means council approval of the ballot language. So practically speaking, city staff would, is it technically feasible to do that? Perhaps practically not. City staff would have to drop essentially everything that it's working on in order to bring that to the council. So I wanted to make sure the council was aware of that factor in trying to get something at this late hour on to the November ballot. I would envision at least two special city council sessions. One, to discuss the issues and get input before drafting the ballot language. And the second, to make a decision about that ballot language. And, and those would be compacted into prior to August 7th. City Attorney Kenyon, did you have anything to add?
I, I was just going to add that if a council member wants to put an item on the agenda and there's no further comment by council members, then there's no deliberation. And the manager could put it on the next agenda. If there is deliberation, then what would happen is that we would put an item on the next agenda to discuss whether or not to put it on the agenda. So I think a council should be aware of that when they're considering what kind of direction they want to give staff.
So just to, you know, I brought it up. Looking at the calendar then, right now, we're, we just, and the consent calendar canceled the second meeting in July. So we would have to probably reinstate that meeting plus having an additional meeting before August 7th in order to, to put it on the ballot, correct?
I, I would say at this point, if you wanted to seriously consider anything for the ballot in November, we would need to schedule a special meeting of some sort. So if there is a desire to schedule a special meeting to discuss this, that is probably a question that, you know, you could, you, you could make the suggestion to the manager to schedule a special meeting. And then if there is any deliberation on it, then we would just have to wait until the next regular meeting to place it on the agenda to discuss it. So.
Okay, so then the next regular meeting is until August 14th, am I correct?
Which would be too late.
I think it's the 10th, but.
But isn't if, let's say we have two city council races this year. And the deadline for filing for city council is August, what, 13th or something like that? August 7th? Well, there's a.
Councilmember O'Neill, the deadline for filing for a city council candidate is August 7th.
Okay, but if an incumbent does not run, is that extended another week to August 13th?
So with the transition to district-based elections, there are no contemplated incumbents for the new district seats.
There are no incumbents in any of the district seats that are.
Oh, okay. So that extra week doesn't happen this time? Oh, okay. Okay. That's what I was going to ask is why couldn't, you know what I mean? If it was extended for that, okay, well, then it's discussion with the, if, do we want to have a special meeting for it? I'll leave it up to my fellow members.
I would like to ask a question. It, it sounds like the question and the urgency that you're presenting, Councilmember O'Neill, is to get something on the ballot for November of this year. And I ask, I'm asking, is there another ballot that, such as, is there an opportunity for a March ballot or something in the spring that would enable the city to have the opportunity to follow the process that we've already laid out, which we had to back burner because of COVID and a lot of other competing priorities? I'm a little hesitant to jump straight to a ballot without a process. Generally, there's a lot of meetings and a lot of focus to help derive what that ballot language should be, what the issues are. I think there's a lot of people who say, what are the issues? We don't need fireworks anymore. But it really is more complicated than that to arrive at what the ballot language should be, to give the direction to staff. And it, I just hesitate to rush that process when there's, if there's another ballot, another election that we can focus on, we may be able to do it in a more planned way.
Okay.
Is, is, is a early 2021 measure an option? Well, I, I would be in favor, just, just so we're clear, I would be in favor of meeting, having special meetings, getting on the ballot in November. Just for the record.
The, the elections in March and November of 2021 are, are options for, you know, ballot language like this or a ballot item like this. One factor related is, is special elections like in March are going to be a lot more expensive to put an item on the ballot, as well as the off, off-council election in November of 2021. But it was, it was mentioned that, yeah, the, the, the progress that we were making to do the flash vote-based survey and the polling of all the nonprofit groups has been delayed because of the coronavirus. We're still on that schedule, conducting that work, planning to conduct that work this fall unless the council directs otherwise.
I can't see taking away every single other thing that we're doing right now. Stopping, adding two special meetings to get this done so that.
to get this done so that we can have it out by August the 7th. It just seems very constricting to everything else.
I, I would have to say at this point that there, I, I don't see a clear consensus to give direction to staff. So.
Okay, I withdraw my.
Okay.
Request then. No problem.
I didn't get to speak though.
Sorry, Councilmember Beer.
You raise your hand.
Okay.
My, I can tell you that my, my concern really is that this is not on the agenda. And, and the council is really starting to deliberate. And so I apologize for, if I cut you off, Councilmember Beer, but I think it is important to understand that at this point, the council is really veering into deliberation on an item that's not on the agenda.
Well, all I was gonna say was that I would support putting it on the November ballot. So.
Well, the Councilmember O'Neill, your withdrawal stands or?
I will yield to the majority of councils to whether or not they want to have the two special meetings because that's everybody's, I don't know who's going on vacation when, you know what I mean? And that kind of stuff that, is there enough of us around to be able to have a meeting? Well, I guess if you're Zoom, unless you're camping, it doesn't make much difference. So.
I, I gotta reiterate, I don't think that it's strictly a matter of two meetings. I feel like the impact on staff and the priorities that we have and the number of issues that we're facing in terms of dealing with our economic development, our focus on moving our projects forward. We just had a meeting on Jan, on June 22nd, talking about the order of our priorities. And now suddenly this has risen to the very top. I've questioned whether that's an appropriate thing. And I don't, I'm sorry, Michelle, if that's deliberating, but that's my concern.
Well, I think it rose to the top because of this year.
Oh, fires. Right, understandably. And, um, you know, admittedly, more, a more expensive election doesn't really appeal to me. But we're not gonna have 4th of July between now and, you know, March. I think it would enable staff to produce what we would need to produce, do the work that would need to be done to get to that point in a more.
Then I will ask that we have put it, ask staff to come back for some time for a meeting, you know, to discuss it, for, to put it on the ballot at some point, the next election or whenever. Does that make sense?
So are, so you're saying?
Withdraw it for the November election because that seems with, you know, but ask staff to come back at a later date so that we can make the decision for that.
Yeah.
And, and just for the record, I did hear that there was a majority that was willing to do this, but uh, there's a part of me that really feels overwhelmed for the city staff as it is. And I uh, want to be respectful of that. So, community, please understand. But it is a priority. Okay, uh, city manager, are you off? You done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, great. So we will be moving on to public hearing. And this public hearing is number, item number 14, consideration of appeal of the planning commission's approval with conditions of use permit UP dash 96 S 18 for the installation of a new Verizon wireless communication facility as associated pole mounted equipment in the Terranova Boulevard public right of way approximately 870 feet north of its intersection with the Everglades Drive in vicinity of Terranova High School at 1450 Terranova Boulevard. Uh, and their APN is listed there and finding the project exempt from the California Equality Act. I have to recuse myself from this item because I live uh, in very close proximity to this location. So with that, I will hand it over to uh, Count, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer to run the meeting from here on out. And I will await a note from a city clerk or city manager when it is okay for me to join back. Is that a clear city clerk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it is.
So I have no prep for this. Um, I would take a direction from the city manager and the city attorney in terms of how to proceed with this public hearing.
So at this point, we would turn to staff to give their oral staff report?
Right. Do we first have to do the ex parte conversations or?
Oh, yeah. Good point. Thank you.
We would do that right before you open up public comment.
Okay.
So the order will be staff presentation, then.
Then ex parte communications from the council members, if any. Then open up the public hearing, you would allow the the appellant an opportunity, they would have 10 minutes and then they can decide if they want to retain any rebuttal time. And then following that, then the applicant would have 10 minutes for their presentation. And if they want any rebuttal time, and then you would open it up for the public to make any of their comments through the raised hand feature in the Zoom. And then if there's any rebuttal time left, then you would address that and then close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation.
Very well. So we'll have a staff report.
And before we start, I believe city clerk Coffee had something she was going to state. Correct. Um, the appellant has submitted items that were attached with the agenda and had subsequently requested that attachment F in the agenda packet be uh, removed from consideration for this item. So he's asking that the attachment F that is in the council agenda packet, uh, should, shall not be considered as part of his submittal for the appeal hearing.
Sarah, could you tell me what page that starts at? So I kinda because the agenda thing was 885 pages and I didn't memorize the pages, you know?
Member O'Neill, it's packet page 435.
435. Thank you very much, Christian.
Okay, we can go ahead with the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner, or Councilmembers. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. On April 20th, 2020, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution to improve with conditions permit to install wireless communication facility on an existing utility pole within the public right of way of Terranova Boulevard within the vicinity of 1450 Terranova Boulevard, which is the site of Terranova High School. The project includes installing a two foot tall and one foot diameter cylindrical antenna mounted on top of a five foot tall pole extension attached to an existing utility pole and associated radio equipment mounted lower on the pole. The proposed antenna installation would yield about a seven foot height increase above the existing 38 foot, uh, two inch high pole. The resulting pole height would be 45 feet, five inches. Similar wireless communication facilities have been approved and constructed by the carrier and two other neighborhoods in Pacifica. On April 30, 2020, the appellant submitted an appeal of the planning commission's approval citing several bases for their appeal. Staff responded to each of the appellant's bases in the staff report and finds that the project does not violate sections of the Pacifica Municipal Code, that the project does not nullify protections or indemnities provided to the city from from property devaluation or personal injury lawsuits, that the project has the right to locate within the public right of way based on state regulations and that feasible alternative to the project would not reduce visual impacts and no clear aesthetic impacts on Terranova High School or the surrounding neighborhood was presented. Or that other concerns of the appellant are criteria that can be used to deny a project under state and federal regulations. The staff report includes an overview of the complex framework of local, state and federal regulations that affect the city's processing of a wireless communication application. The staff report details the project's consistency with local regulations and the required use finding, permit findings, consistency with the state's limitation on local government regulating wireless communications providers within the public right of way, inconsistency with the Federal Telecommunication Act of 1996. Specifically, the act's provisions on the local government zoning authority, including the city may only seek to, uh, seek confirmation that the wireless facility will comply with federal regulations establishing permissible limits on radio radio frequency emissions. Once an applicant has demonstrated a facility's compliance with the FCC's radio frequency emission standards, a local government may not attempt to further regulate a facility in this regard. The city cannot regulate in a manner that has the effect of prohibiting the provisions of personal wireless services. The city may not regulate in a manner that is unreasonably discriminate, discriminates among providers or of functionally equivalent services. And the FCC has established shot clocks which have determined a presumed reasonable timeframe for local governments' actions on wireless communication facility applications. The applicant has provided additional materials in response to the appellant's appeal, including a statement from Verizon Wireless, uh, that a significant gap in Verizon's wireless service exists in the West Park, Pacifica area around Terranova High School. In the appellant's material submitted on the date of publication of the staff report, 10 letters from the public were included objecting to the project at 1450 Terranova Boulevard. 12 additional letters from the public were also included in the material but are focused on the objection of a separate wireless communication facility project. As detailed further in the staff report and summarized earlier in my presentation, staff recommends the denial of the appeal for reasons that the project is consistent with all applicable regulations and that the findings made by the planning commission areas are supported. Staff also believes there is substantial evidence to support the application of a class three categorical categorical extension from the California Environmental Quality Act uh, to the proposed project. Therefore, staff recommends making the motion described in the recommended action section of the staff report. Uh, Chair Nivlin was scheduled to join us. He may not be here at this time. He.
He's here.
Well, I am here. I am here.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you are. Um, so staff and Chair Nivlin are, um, Chair Nivlin is present tonight as the planning commissioner liaison. Staff and Chair Nivlin are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, and good evening, honorable counsel, Senior Planner Christian Murdock. Just to supplement Associate Planner O'Connor's presentation. To be clear, in the early part of her presentation, she mentioned similar facilities which the city has approved. I want to clarify, that was for a different carrier. Verizon, to my knowledge, has not had facilities of this type approved previously.
Okay, are there questions from council? Mary, are you nodding your head? Yes, I have questions.
Um, Bonnie, you mentioned the shot clock. Could you please explain that?
Um, yeah, so, um, I can probably start, but, um, others can probably pull in the, uh, further. Federal regulations establish timelines in which local jurisdictions are required to applications for wireless communication facilities. Uh, depending on the type of wireless facility, um, the shot clock timing is, is different. Um, as detailed in the staff report for a small cell facility such as this one, it's typically 90 days. Um, the city and the applicant have, um, come, have agreed to a tolling agreement that has extended that shot clock um, for this particular project. Beyond that 90 days. Um, and it's currently scheduled to expire September 4th of this year. So.
Thank you.
You're.
Mike?
Yeah, hi. I'm not sure if you can see hands or not, Sue Beckmeyer.
Well, I can see when you do that, but I keep getting muted again. So sorry.
Okay, um, I, I just have a question. I mean, um, of all the papers we've read, I've read about this particular application. There was something in there about there's been 10 applications for this type of facility in the city. Were they all from Verizon or were they a mix of carriers? Do staff know?
Yes. So to address the prior applications, I believe the city approved 10 or 11 applications for wireless facilities on utility poles in the public right of way for AT&amp;T in the Valleymar neighborhood. The city subsequently, a couple of years later, approved two more facilities for AT&amp;T in the public right of way, one of which has been constructed in the Peter Point neighborhood on San Pedro Avenue um, in front of the Ace Hardware Store. Uh, the other on Oddstat Boulevard has not been constructed. And then Verizon previously submitted an application for a number of facilities. One, two, three, four, five, six. I believe, um, it looks like eight in total. However, the two that, um, two are remaining that are being processed. This, this facility and another that the planning commission has approved at 1307 Redwood Way, which will be the subject of another city council appeal hearing.
Okay, so all of them have been approved and, and are built or on their way to being built or whatever already?
All of the applications we've received have been approved or withdrawn by the applicant. The city council or the planning commission has not denied any of the applications.
What I was getting at is like, let's say there's one on this pole and then you go up half a block and there's an AT&amp;T pole, you know what I mean? Or another Verizon pole and stuff. And I was just concerned about concentration or whatever, because I think they all have a gap in that particular neighborhood. And I'm just curious as to how many of these type of things would be there. That's all. Thank you, Christian.
Is there?
Other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a, a tower at the middle school currently that you can see from the freeway? There's a very large tower there. Is that a Verizon or AT&amp;T tower? Do we know?
Uh, Councilmember Vadois, are you referring to Ingrid B. Lacy Middle School?
Yes, I am.
Uh, there is a wireless communications facility located, I believe, on a light standard for the school playground area. Uh, I'm not, or play fields. I'm not sure the carrier or carriers which operate that.
It is Verizon. I was in school board when it was approved. It is Verizon.
Thank you.
That's convenient. Other questions? All right, hearing none. Commissioner Nivlin, was there anything that you wanted to add before we hear from the appellant?
Uh, nothing at this point. Well, maybe, maybe I will just, some highlights. This was one of those circumstances where we weren't unanimous. I believe it was a five one vote, however, and the, the commission was, um, you know, concerned, uh, and, and as you get a chance to look at the minutes of the, uh, of the hearing, there were a lot to, that went to the sort of the ensuring the structural integrity of the pole. That was something that we spent a fair amount of time talking about. And as you saw as well, uh, some concern about kind of the, the notion of the shift from 4G technology to 5G technology. This is a 4G pole, a 4G technology, but some concerns expressed and some conversation around all that. But, uh, I think otherwise staff is, uh, you know, covered in the, in the context of the conversation, the things that came up at the, at the planning commission. So um, again, I'm appreciative of the opportunity to serve on the commission and always good to see you all.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, that brings up another question.
Yes.
It's currently a 4G installation, but can Verizon change this to a 5G installation without notifying the city that they're making changes?
That's an excellent question, Councilmember Vadois. The answer is, uh, the federal regulations and state law make it rather straightforward for wireless carriers who have facilities that have already been approved in this fashion with a public hearing and a discretionary permit to make modifications to their facilities. In most cases, a public hearing would not be required. And so there may not be another process like this. And so there may not be another process like this to consider whether a carrier may go from four G to five G. However, they do need to notify the city in almost every circumstance because a building permit and potentially an encroachment permit would be required in order to make the modifications to the facility and to actually construct them in a way that's safe with the technical codes adopted by the city, such as the building code, the electrical code, et cetera. So the city would likely be aware of it. The city would be unlikely to have discretion in determining whether that improvement should or should not be made as long as the carrier stays within thresholds established in federal law. Uh and those are rather permissive in terms of the physical uh modifications to the facility, such as significant increases in height, uh horizontal projections, new equipment, et cetera. The regulatory environment's very favorable for carriers to make modifications to facilities once they're approved.
Thank you.
Um if I could supplement that, I I do want to remark, however, that um the planning department staff would request and review from the carrier information about radio frequency or RF emissions as part of that process. So even though there's not a public hearing process, the city would be evaluating on RF emissions information to ensure that that modification, whatever it is, in this example, four G to five G um complies with all applicable federal RF emission standards to preserve public health. So that is an important safeguard in the city's process.
I actually realized that I have a question. Um I would appreciate if you could, Bonnie or Christian, if you could please describe the planning uh department's process in working with the vendor around reducing the number of transmit transmission devices that are attached to this pole. Um how that how that came about and and what the upshot of that was and and the reasoning behind it?
Absolutely. Um I was involved in that process along with a consulting planner that the city had had engaged. And uh the short version of the story is that Verizon submitted these eight applications, as I mentioned earlier. Um we looked very critically at all of them. Uh among the main areas of focus for the city, as we've explained in the staff report, is aesthetics considerations. And so we have a requirement in our code that the facility needs to be stealthed in the uh most effective way possible. And also, we have a general concern about ensuring that the aesthetic characteristics of the facility are the most attractive or the least intrusive as possible. And so in looking at the facility, my recollection is larger antennas, which were taller, as well as perhaps an overall greater height increase was first proposed, as well as, I believe, three radio units or RUs, as they're called, um in addition to the the minimal power meter and switch box. And so in looking at that, it appeared like an excessive amount of equipment of equipment. And we actually engaged a consulting engineer that the city had on contract who is a radio frequency RF electrical engineer with expertise in wireless facilities and asked him to look critically at these facilities to determine, are these the minimum technological requirements needed to provide the service that's been stated by the carrier? And after that critical review, it was our expert's opinion that smaller antennas, which therefore would have a lower height increase, as well as fewer radio units, should be feasible to allow the carrier to achieve its objective. And after discussions with the carrier, they agreed that they would be willing to modify the facility and therefore reduce from three to two radio units and then reduce the on size of the antennas to comply with the city's municipal code requirements. And so overall, for the facilities that ended up moving forward in any case, which is two that remain, um the overall aesthetic impact has been, I would say, largely reduced from the original versions of the applications.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Other questions? All right. Okay, so the next step, if I'm not mistaken, is we talk about our ex parte communications. Did I get that correct?
Yes. All right, every council member could just list for for the record, in general, what ex parte contacts they've had, just listing who they've had it with.
I talked to the appellant and also to Verizon.
I also had a meeting with representatives from Verizon. And the items the appellant mailed to me, I assumed to all of us, and I did have a very brief conversation with the appellant.
I had a conversation with Verizon.
I had a conversation with Verizon and then also the materials that Councilmember O'Neil referred to from directly directly from the appellant to council members. All right, shall we hear from the appellant?
Yes, and they should indicate if they want to reserve any time for rebuttal.
Okay, so Mr. Bot.
Bringing the appellant over now to.
Thank you. So I wouldn't begin to know how to do that. Dr. Bot, are you there?
Okay, I'm here.
There you are. I see you now.
Hello.
Hello. All right, so my understanding of the process, and please be patient with me, this is the first time, this is my first rodeo. My understanding is that there are ten minutes for you to discuss your appeal, but you do have the option to withhold up to three minutes of that time for rebuttal. What is your interest?
I will be using the entire ten minutes now.
Very well. Um City Clerk Coffee, are you ready to have the timer and have the presentation begin?
I'm just adjusting the timer at the moment and I will share uh the presentation that Mr. Bot provided. Give me one moment, please.
Thank you.
Okay, so I I do have the um I do have the uh presentation up. And um I'm looking to get the the timer. The timer will not display on the screen, so I will just let the appellant know when there are about two minutes left on the on the time uh to to start wrapping things up.
And then also let them know when there's a minute left.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, honorable members of the city council, my name is Dr. Sunil Bot. I'm a physician, dual-board certified in family medicine, neuromuscular skeletal medicine, and I'm here on behalf of the Cal Coast Responsible Tech. Next slide, please. The city is obviously worried about potential litigations. You have been told that your hands are tied and the safe thing to do would be to allow these facilities to be permitted. You are not alone, as this is what most municipalities are being told. Next slide. The residents of Park Pacifica are very concerned about the negative aesthetic impacts of this installation on the community and our largest investments are homes. The to show the city council that we are not making uneducated or baseless claims, we pooled together thousands of dollars during a time when most of us were unemployed or significantly underemployed to hire one of the most experienced telecommunications lawyers in the country to prepare a legal memorandum to effectively, there should have been about six pictures there that we're going to come in one by one, but next slide, please, to effectively untie your hands, making it clear that you do legally have, back please, do legally have the right and the power to protect the character of our neighborhoods and protect the rightful appreciation of our property values and the city's subsequent tax revenue. It also details exactly how to legally deny such an application under federal law. Next slide, please. Thank you, Sarah, for fixing that. As clarified on page one of the memorandum, should a wireless character carrier bring litigation against the city in alleged violation of the nineteen ninety-six TCA, they would only be able to seek a court order for the permit and no monetary damages or attorney's fees can be brought against the city. Next slide, please. On the other hand, if property values of nearby homes do not appreciate in line with comparable homes free of unsightly wireless facilities, there are significant monetary damages that the city could possibly be held liable for. Next slide, please. Point four of the memorandum clearly shows that the relevant section of chapter forty-seven of the United States Code has never been changed by any of the more recent FCC declaratory rulings. This section clearly states that local governments have the instrumental decision-making power over placement and construction of wireless facilities as long as they, as long as none of the following five limitations and provision be applied. Next slide, please. We are not asking the city to act in any way that is discriminatory. Next slide. We are not asking the city to effectively or materially limit or prohibit provisions of wireless services. The three. Next slide, please. The the net, the three examples of effective prohibition interpreted by the C FCC are carrier unable to provide additional services, carrier unable to bring new services to an area, rules giving advantage to one service over others. Uh this should be on the next slide, please. We're we're missing. We are asking for better cell service.
I'm sorry.
I'm I've paused the time. I'm having a technical difficulty with the advancing of the slide. Give me one moment.
There you go. Okay, you can leave it right there.
Okay, and I'm resuming your time.
Okay, so no discrimination. We're not effectively prohibiting the FCC says that prohibiting effective prohibition is denying of services, new services, additional services, or advantages. We're actually asking for better cell service in the well-known dead areas of Pacifica with a minimum number of facilities necessary. This application is presented as a four G facility, which therefore would not be providing any new services. Next slide, please. We are not asking the city to delay decision beyond a reasonable period of time or violate any shot clocks. Next slide, please. And we are asking the city to make a denial in writing and we provide to you specific instructions on how to do that in compliance with this section of the TCA. Also, we are not basing our appeal on any concerns of RF emissions or any other environmental concerns otherwise. Next slide, please. We are asking that Verizon or the city provide a more thorough study of our neighborhood's multiple signal coverage deficits and together provide a more encompassing and overall less intrusive remedy. Next slide, please. We are asking for smart planning. This that is smart for our city and our residents, not smart for the industry at the expense of the city's and its residents' properties. Smart planning would be to define objective goals which are measurable deficits and fill those deficits most effectively and efficiently. Next slide, please. We undeniably have multiple cellular dead zones in the back of the valley. Mayor Martin herself told me she had to get a landline for her babysitter due to the poor signal coverage on Terranova Boulevard. Councilmember Vadois mentioned that she has heard from residents that these gaps in coverage worsen as we move back towards Park Casitas. Next slide, please. However, Verizon and the applicant both refuse to admit that there is an actual gap in coverage at this site or anywhere in Pacifica. Any back-of-the-valley resident knows that this is nothing short of fantasy. There are coverage gaps that can easily be measured and clearly defined by Verizon or any RF engineer. That previous map was created by a free Android app called Cell Mapper and a couple of drives around the neighborhood by myself. If a clear and measurable objective is not defined prior to construction, then the goal cannot be met and the carrier will require additional nearby facilities constructed on our streets further negatively impacting our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. The staff report for today's hearing states on page twelve that impacts on property value is not a criterion that can be used to deny the application for a WCF under applicable laws. Point two B of our memorandum clearly shows that federal courts can and do recognize impact on property value as a criterion that local zoning authorities can use to affect to use as evidence to regulate placement of WCS. And for a city planner to say that our city cannot protect its own taxpayers' property values, this is very concerning to us as homeowners. Whether this is an issue with the PMC or the staff planner's understanding of it, that is something that urgently needs to be addressed. Next slide, please. The staff report also states on page seven and ten that because of the applicant's right to locate a WCF in the public right of way pursuant to CPUC seventy-nine oh one, the applicant has no further burden under federal regulation or state law to demonstrate the necessity of this WCF. Next slide, please. CPUC seventy-nine oh one allows telephone corporations to construct lines and erect poles, post piers, or abutments in the public right of way, so long as they do not incommode public use of the road. Based on the plain language, this state law applies to wired utility and does not imply anything about removing the burden to demonstrate necessity. Next slide, please. In fact, in April twenty nineteen, the California Supreme Court clarified its stance on CPUC in the case T-Mobile versus San Francisco. On page seventeen, it states, "A company seeking to build under seventy-nine oh one must approach the PUC and obtain a certificate of public necessity. This certificate is not alone sufficient. Utility will still be subject to local control in carrying out the construction." Next slide. This ruling also further clarifies the definition of incommode as pertaining to any inconvenience that can be disturbed, that can disturb public use beyond just travel. Terranova Boulevard is the main thoroughfare in and out of the back of the valley. Most residents travel on it at least twice a day, and anyone visiting from the north uses it to access our valley. Next slide. Traffic is already bad during school times. Imagine if there is maintenance or worse, a pole failure. Also, the aesthetic impact of having to view that antenna both when leaving and returning home will also be a daily and significant inconvenience to us. If you approve this application, once the facility is constructed on our streets, the wireless provider will have the ability to further modify the installation and continue to increase the height without any further zoning approval. We just talked about that. That's point three of the memorandum. Next slide, please. While the relevant FCC declaratory ruling eighteen dash one thirty-three is still being appealed in the Ninth Circuit by six separate petitions, we still ask that the city join the over two dozen California municipalities, including our county and most of our neighboring cities that have updated their municipal code in the last two years to clearly define small wireless facilities in congruence with chapter forty-seven of the federal code and explicitly detail our aesthetic regulations and fees.
Two minutes remaining.
We look forward to the opportunity to work with the city in updating the PMC, which is essential to keep up with federal statutes and generate fair market revenue to the city from such applications. Next slide. To summarize, we are asking for smart planning, which is objectively defining a goal or necessity by measuring signal strength in areas of poor coverage, measuring dropped calls in areas of poor network capacity, listing new services or improvements compared to current services. This application has no objectively defined goals. The applicant stated that Verizon engineers have done the studies, but they have not been presented to the city. We filed a public records request on April twenty-ninth and still not have received any information. Next slide, please. Smart action is determining how a proposed site will objectively satisfy predetermined goals, picking one site that effectively and efficiently satisfies the goals and requiring power backup for communication equipment purported to improve safety standards. This application, without objective goal.
Remaining.
There is no backup power to allow this facility to operate during our most common emergencies, which are fires and earthquakes. Next slide. We have identified three sites on the hillside behind Terranova High School that would provide better coverage based on a professional engineering statement. Next slide. They are easily accessed and could use larger equipment with backup power due to larger setbacks. Next slide. If you insist on using the public right of way, there are additional sites at higher elevations with direct line of sight to the proposed site, such as a pure WCF next to the water tank on Fastler or the nearby utility poles on Fastler. These sites would provide better signal coverage likely to the back of the valley and would not affect traffic on or be visible from the main thoroughfares of our valley. Obtaining objective measurement studies is technically very easy and there's no reason we should omit these studies prior to installing wireless communication facilities. Next slide. Thank you very much.
All right. Um our next step, if I understand it, is the applicant will have a present.
Madam Vice Mayor, you may want to ask the council if they have any questions of.
Oh, I didn't realize we could do that first. Good. Council members, do you have any questions?
Just of the appellant.
Of the appellant.
When you asked Verizon about having multiple sites instead of just one, what was their response to that? Because there is severely a lack of coverage there, which everyone knows.
So I was unable to talk to Verizon. Based on the Verizon map, they will not admit that there is a lack in coverage. I showed you their map.
Uh huh.
So they will say that there's no lack, there's no gap in coverage. That we're at. Um, that we're asking for a better detailing of the gaps so that they can be better remedied altogether.
And can we ask the city attorney questions now, too?
You might want to wait to do that until.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait.
The public hearing.
Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, Dr. Butt, thank you so much for your presentation for starters and for all the information that you shared with us tonight. Um, is it possible for us to see your alternate sites again? Is that possible for us to see a slide again?
Yeah. The last two slides, um, Sarah's got them, I think. That would be twenty-four and twenty-six. There you go. So twenty-four, those are all utility poles, power lines that go across the hill. You can see them all from the front of Terranova High School. They're poking up just above the trees there. And, um, the, the second picture shows that they're accessible. You know, I'll be at private property. They're quite accessible.
So Verizon would have to, uh, pay the property owners, um, to put those sites, uh, those, uh, poles on their sites.
Well, the pole is, I, I assume the pole is owned by the Northern California Jump Poil Association, just like the other utility poles. So I, you know, you're asking, you're not, that's a question for someone else.
Okay, thank you.
This is a better remedy to better fill the gaps in coverage. And then twenty-six shows public right-of-way. You know, that's up on Fastler and there's a water tank there and utility poles on the public right-of-way there, which would be similar.
Thank you so much.
Other questions?
Why, why does the applicant feel that putting on a, on a pole in one public right-of-way next to houses there is better than on the public right-of-way where they're proposed?
So I think that they should not be on the public right-of-way. If you feel that they need to put them on the public right-of-way, I'm saying that is better because it's not a main thoroughfare. It's not visible to everybody who's leaving, every resident who's leaving or coming home. That's tucked away. And if there's ever any maintenance that needs to be done, it's not going to shut down the road. And God forbid if something falls again, it's not going to, you know, block us into our valley, um, you know, giving us only one way out rather than two.
Thank you.
For the record, I'd prefer them be on those power poles behind that are not in the public right-of-way.
No, I was just asking, you know what I mean? There are two apples. Why would there's one apple better, you know?
So the actual reason is that the higher elevation would get better signal coverage. Uh, you know, basic engineering says you put an antenna at the top of the hill because it reaches further when there's direct line of sight. I don't want it at the bottom of the hill because it's going to be a small radius, whereas up at the top of the hill, it's going to be that same equipment could go miles further.
Other questions? No? Councilmember Vodarlos, any questions?
No, I've asked my question. Thank you.
I'm going to say no. I might have some.
Not right now. No, I'm not asking.
No, I don't.
Not at this time. Okay, very well. Okay. So then do we hear from the applicant?
Yes.
City attorney, yes? And that person presenting will be.
Well, let's transition the, um, from the appellant to the applicant.
City clerk, do you have a name of who's going to be representing the applicant?
I, I do. I will, um, announce them as I bring them on.
Sarah, will you need to demote some people to make enough room for panelists?
Um, we'll, we'll see once I'm transitioning them on. Um, I am bringing up Paul Alberton from McKenzie Alberton, um, as one of the applicant team.
So we need to get clear from the applicant as to how many people are going to be making the presentation on behalf of the applicant.
So I, I have five members of the applicant team that, um, will be coming on board. The next I'm bringing on is Melvin Bouquet from Verizon Wireless. And I have Joanna Wang from Modus. I have Christine Keener from Verizon. And the fifth member is, um, Raj Mather from Hammett and Edison, um, who's coming on board right now.
And then if the applicant could just let us know before you start your presentation, who is going to be making the comments on behalf of the applicant? If you're going to have more than one presenter, please let us know beforehand and let the clerk know how many minutes you would like for each presenter or if you would just like any rebuttal time at all.
So for the five folks that are, um, that were named by the, uh, city clerk coffee, um, could you please, could someone please explain who will be making the presentation? And if it is going to be multiple people, how you intend to allocate the time? And the third thing is, um, did you wish to, um, reserve any time?
Councilmember Beckmeyer, this is Joanna Wayne with Modus on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Um, yes, so we will have five members of our team who will be presenting. We split the present, the ten minutes, um, into various people. So all five will be having a part. And we would like to have a three-minute rebuttal as appropriate. And we didn't allocate specific timeframes for each person, but, you know, total ten minutes.
Can we reserve two minutes for rebuttal?
Would you like a notice about when your time is up? Would you like that at two minutes, three minutes? I think before your seven minutes is up.
Two minutes. Uh, maybe we do three minutes.
Will you alert the applicant that they have two minutes left?
Yes, I've noted that, uh, there will be a seven-minute presentation and I will make a note of when there's a two-minute wrap-up and then, uh, one minute remaining. And, uh, three minutes reserved for rebuttal.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do they need a rebuttal if the other, if the applicant or the appellant?
Yes.
Did they still get a rebuttal? Okay.
Thank you for asking. That was my same question.
And, um, I will, give me just a moment and I will bring up the, uh, presentation from the applicant. So I'm, I'm ready to start the timer, um, when, uh, whenever the applicant is ready to begin their presentation.
All right, ready. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. My name is Kristen Keen. Hello. Uh, my name is Kristen Keener. I'm the Director of Government and Community Affairs for Verizon in the Bay Area. Um, in this new landscape, we all know that more people are doing more things with more devices and we realize that connectivity is more important now than ever. One of the things that I think COVID has shown is, is really highlighted the many inequities of our society. It's not lost on me that as school districts, you know, announced the reopening plans and many disadvantaged students and their families have struggled to access information with limited access to their educators, who some will start the academic year with lower achievement levels, levels than their counterparts. Enhanced connectivity will address so many of the issues that we all care about. Equal access to education, emergency preparedness, telecommuting, telehealth, small business resiliency, and the endless economic opportunities that connectivity will bring. Now more than ever, people understand the importance of investing our infrastructure and we all understand that building out this network will have a meaningful impact on the city of Pacifica. Now I'll pass it over to our project manager, Joanna Wang.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Joanna Wayne, Government Affairs with Modus. I'm an authorized representative of Verizon Wireless. Our firm specializes in small cell deployments on behalf of the major carriers. In attendance with us tonight also are Verizon radio frequency engineer Melvin Bouquet, Paul Alberton, the counsel for Verizon Wireless, and Mr. Raj Mather, a licensed engineer with Ham and Edison, an independent third-party engineering firm who completed the radio frequency compliance study and can answer any questions you guys might have about emissions or health and safety of the facility. In tonight's presentation, we'll be going over the project details, including the timeline of the project, the design, the alternatives we considered, and then I'll be handing it over to Mr. Mather of Ham and Edison to discuss the facilities FCC compliance and then back to Verizon Wireless to present information on its current network performance and the appeal issues raised. Next slide, please. This is a 3D Google aerial of the proposed project site near Terranova High School. The objective is to provide enhanced communications, both data and voice in and around Terranova High School and Terranova Boulevard for students, pedestrians, motorists, visitors, and residents, as well as emergency services personnel and first responders who are Verizon Wireless customers. The target service area is located in a valley, making it a challenging area to serve because of the ridges, trees, and hills that obscure the wireless signal. Next slide, please. In front of you is a brief overview of the chronology of the project. As you can see there, highlighted in yellow, the use permit application was filed two years ago in February twenty eighteen. However, what I'd like to draw your attention to is the fact that Verizon has actually been actively working to improve service to this area well before the use permit was filed. The project was first kicked off in August twenty sixteen, four years ago, at which time internal due diligence was initiated, including field analysis and design and engineering. Since that initial submit, Verizon has completed two separate design iterations, reducing the radio count from three to two and the antenna height and overall facility of the equipment. The Planning Commission approved the project on April twentieth. That decision was appealed and has led to tonight's city council hearing. Next slide, please. This is a photo rendering of the proposed facility looking southeast from Terranova Boulevard. The canister antenna and ancillary equipment will be painted brown to match the existing wood pole and to help camouflage the facility as much as feasible. Next slide, please. This is an alternate view looking from northwest from Terranova Boulevard. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is an elevation page pulled from the plan set. The project is designed to meet California Public Utilities Code, General Order ninety-five, which governs overhead electrical line construction, MPG standard oh-two-seven-nine-one-one, which governs pole-mounted communications equipment. The design includes one two-foot antenna, two four-G radios, a smart meter and disconnect on the pole, as well as the associated conduits. Next slide, please. When selecting this location, we evaluated a total of eight separate solutions, including seven alternatives for the area. Because state law allows Verizon Wireless as a telephone corporation to place telephone equipment on telephone poles, the scope of our analysis was limited to existing telephone poles in the public right-of-way along Terranova Boulevard. This aerial map identifies those locations and the reasons they were ruled out. Five of the seven alternatives were automatically disqualified for engineering reasons, including the existence of primary risers, capacitor bank, manual switch. Of the remaining two alternatives that did not have PG&E auto disqualifiers, alternative one was considered more visually intrusive to nearby residents because it's closer proximity to homes north of the high school along Terranova Boulevard. The other alternative, Alt-seven, was ruled out for technical reasons as a significant tree coverage would cause signal degradation. For that facility to be viable, it would have required tree abatement and ongoing maintenance from the check, from the high school on trees near the baseball field. We did make outreach to Jefferson Union High School to see if that would be feasible and the school confirmed that they had no plans to reduce the height of those trees, nor were they interested in, um, ongoing maintenance to support this project at that location. Next slide, please.
Next, I'll introduce Mr. Raj Mather of Hammond Edison to discuss the FCC compliance of the facility.
One minute remaining.
Good evening. My name is Raj Mather. I'm with Hammett and Edison. We're an independent consulting engineering firm located in Sonoma, and I am a licensed professional electrical engineer in the state of California. Our job as engineers is to evaluate sites like these for radio frequency exposure compliance with the FCC standard. We've completed that evaluation for the site to find that it will comply with the FCC limits. The maximum calculated RF exposure level anywhere underground is two-point-four percent of the FCC limit, which means that the levels are about forty times below the limit. The maximum calculated RF exposure level at any nearby building is zero-point-three-three percent of the limit, which means that the levels are about three-hundred times below that limit. And I'll stop there and, uh, pass it on to, uh, the Net Verizon Network Engineer.
Hello, my name is Melvin Bakai. I'm Verizon Wireless Art Design Engineer. Uh, where's the slide?
Time is up for the presentation.
Would, would the applicant wish to extend their initial presentation or stick with the, with three minutes of rebuttal?
Paul, I think you're on mute.
Yes, please. Let's, let's, if Melvin can just speak for two minutes, we'll just take one minute on rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, I'm starting the two minutes right, uh, right now, once he begins speaking.
Uh, the slide, please. My name is Melvin Bakai, Verizon Wireless Art Design Engineer for Intertas and Motel County. The current, uh, slide is showing the existing and proposed Verizon facilities in the area. Next slide, please. Verizon Wireless has identified, uh, identified a significant gap in its four-G LTE service in the West Pacific area around Terranova, uh, High School. That's the white space you can see from the map. This is because the nearby topography that blocks the signal from existing facilities between the gap of the area of the white space, uh, between the, uh, Verizon facility, uh, there's a ridge along, uh, Presby Drive, rises up ninety feet above that facility's elevation. And also between the white space and the Verizon facility to the southeast, the ridge along Park Pacific Avenue and Captain Court, rises up to two-hundred-twenty feet above the facility's elevation. Next, next slide, please. Uh, the cover smart is showing, next slide, uh, okay, that, uh, the, uh, this might be showing the average signal level from existing, uh, Verizon facilities received by customer devices in gap over twenty-four hours on May twenty-eight, two thousand, uh, twenty-twenty. I will pass on to, uh, Mr. Paul Alberton, our legal representative.
Thank you, Melvin. Um, I'll just quickly say that Melvin has very carefully analyzed and described the gap that Verizon Wireless is trying to solve in Terranova Boulevard. And the sites, uh, this small cell and the other small cell that you will hear are very low wattage facilities, about five hundred watts each, and they're designed to surgically correct this coverage gap that we have along Terranova Boulevard in this corridor. And that's the principal reason that we aren't placing facilities up on a hill or a big macro site at the, at the, uh, high school. We're trying to address our coverage gap in AWS and PCS service in a, in a, uh, measured and way that our design engineers believe will best serve the network, and that's what Melvin was describing to you. I can just go on and the, uh, further just discuss the appellant's issues in our rebuttal. Was that the end of my time? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so with having reserved a minute for rebuttal, um, how do we proceed with that?
Are there any questions from council for the applicant?
I have a question. Thank you. Everybody, um, so you mentioned that you spoke with the school board about the trees, but did, was the project ever presented to the school board? At all? Was it presented to the school board, the high school board?
I, so I.
So I did reach out to the school board and the Turnover High School Facilities Manager regarding the project. I did let them know, I think her name was Tina Rappaport, that we were looking to improve service to the area. We were evaluating locations and I provided photos of the utility pole that we were looking into and let her know what it would require if we were to use that pole. That communication was included in an alternatives analysis addendum that was submitted to staff, staff Mrs. O'Connor earlier last week or so.
Yes, that's in the agenda packet.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Neill.
The lawyer is, so the alternative of putting it up on the hill, like beside by the water tank or whatever, why does that not work versus putting it on the floor of the mountain?
Melvin, is that a question you want to address?
Yeah, I can take that. So hopefully the radio that we're gonna use here are low, low transmitter, low transmit radios, low-power radios. So it's not going very far. Putting, putting the small cell in that area is too, is too far from the target coverage area.
Okay, so you're talking because of the strength of the signal and the distance you want it to cover is the issue?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
If I may elaborate, the, the design of a cellular engineer is very precise. The net, the miracle of cellular is that the, you have different cells where this, you have a dominant signal in each cell to provide coverage. If you put a high site adjacent to our other high sites at North San Pedro and San Pedro, you, you have to crank up the wattage. You have to put a much higher wattage facility to get down into the canyon, and you would end up conflicting with our other sites so that there wouldn't be a dominant signal in those, in those areas. The, the design here, the macro sites are like sprinklers on a lawn where we're trying to cover large areas, and we're filling in here a, a small topographic problem along Turnover Boulevard, which as Melvin noted, our macro sites are unable to reach through the topographic rises 300 feet to the west and 90 feet to the east that block our signal from getting into this area. So redesigning the network to put large macro sites on ridge stops would be create problems for the network, would be inefficient, and would likely lead to additional opposition. And as you've heard already, as a telephone corporation, we have the right to place telephone equipment on telephone poles. And under your code, that placing facilities on an existing structure minimizes the aesthetic impact. If we were to place a facility up high, as I said, it would have to be a much larger facility and it would have to, it would this, the way, what has been proposed by Melvin is, is the appropriate approach for resolving this problem. And I'll just backstop it since I'm a lawyer by saying that in addition, the federal law is that a local jurisdiction can't try and dictate the technology that a, the cellular company is going to use. In other words, you can't say, sorry, we don't want small cells, we need macro sites. But this is the most elegant means and most aesthetically preferable means of solving the problem that, that we are trying to resolve on Turnover Boulevard. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah. Another question is, having lived on Turnover Boulevard further up the hill for like 27 years, believe it or not, there was a telephone pole that actually snapped in one of the high winds and all the power went out, you know what I mean? Because the pole snapped. It, has there been some integrity study or, what I mean, that this pole can handle this extra work weight?
Joanna, do you want to take that or you want me to?
It's up to you. I, I can take it. So we have done our own internal studies to evaluate the structural integrity of the pole. However, separately, PG&E will also do their study. And their study governs. So internally, they will complete their own structural analysis and re-verify and then provide a construction sketch showing essentially their engineering. We need to match their engineering. That comes later in the process. If what we're proposing here as part of the land use entitlement is differs in any way from PG&E's engineering, we need to come back and submit for a modification to our existing entitlements to meet PG&E's engineering standards.
So if you're approved tonight, what's the timeframe as to when you're going to start construction of this? You just mentioned PG&E has to study it. So I was just, that's more curiosity.
Yeah, it definitely is a long lead time, longer than any of us prefer, since we're already four years into the project. PG&E will not, they've changed their process recently, and they will not start their own internal engineering until we can provide them a unapproved building permit from the local jurisdiction.
Okay.
If I may elaborate just briefly, there is a, a building permit, an encroachment permit. The PG&E review, if PG&E doesn't think this pole is structurally sound, they'll make Verizon Wireless pay to replace the pole. And then finally, your planning commission added a condition of approval that requires structural analysis prior, prior to final sign-off.
I have a question about the electrical backup in the event of a power outage and the impact of a power outage on the ability of this small cell to function and what the issues are regarding that.
I'll start there, I guess, Joanna. There is no battery backup planned for this pole. Battery backup is available and could be added to the pole if it's something that the council felt was important. The battery backup boxes are about two foot square and they have cooling fans. And so our experience is generally that local jurisdictions do not want backup batteries on the, on the PG&E poles that we're, we're replacing these small cell facilities. So the, there is no backup battery at this point placed on the pole. I have had city councils that have said, we want battery backup, and, and that's something that Verizon is very happy to do.
What about a solar powered thing?
The, unfortunately, the solar panels are not, do not provide adequate voltage for us to run a small cell at this time.
And the backup batteries, how long do they last generally?
The backup battery depends on the amount of usage. So if there is a great deal of usage, which unfortunately seems to be the case when there is a power outage, then the batteries are anywhere from two, two hours to eight hours of backup. But those are frequently the most critical hours when the power is out and there's a crisis. Now, I want to say that 80% of Verizon Wireless macro cells in the state of California have, have generators. So the macro sites will continue to run and continue to provide the service at the level that, that there is today. This, this, these small cells will be providing the, the mid-band, high-capacity AWS, PCS frequencies, which are not currently available through this corridor. Our low-band frequency, which is only about 30% of our entire network, does provide some coverage in this area, and that would continue in a power outage with the macro sites.
So a low-band would continue with, I'm sorry, say that one more time, 30%?
That's the, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I'm too much information. Our
Right. Well, if you're familiar with it, I'm not.
Okay, so the total bandwidth that Verizon Wireless has of frequencies that have been allocated to it by the FCC, only our lowest band, which is about 30% of the network, is able to provide some signal into this area. But as I'm sure you, you will hear if you haven't already, there are drop calls and other problems with the service in the area. The, the sites that we're putting in will have a, a medium-range band, which doesn't travel as far, but carries more data. And that's, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Other questions?
Yes. The appellant said that Verizon hasn't studied the area well enough to know where you should actually have towers. You just chose one and didn't really look around to see if there was additional coverage necessary. Have you done that or not?
Melvin, do you want to speak to that?
It's up to you, Paul.
So Verizon Wireless generally plans out three years ahead in trying to provide the coverage and capacity it needs for its network. You saw, if you pulled up Melvin's plan, maps, it would see, show you where coverage is already. And they base their decisions on where to place new facilities, on where that coverage is not available. So on the map, I don't know if you can pull up Melvin's second or third slide, but it shows a very clear white area along Turnover Boulevard, which is our greatest area for need. And they, and the intent there is to provide us the surgical two poles that we need to fill in that white area. So it's entirely based on the requirements of the network. And it's a, it, it's an art. If you look at the end of Melvin's submittal here, which is I in your packet, he has 20 years of experience in designing these networks. Okay. It, it's a very large investment to get these facilities installed. And so yes, this is very carefully designed as to where the location should be, how to most efficiently provide service to the area for continued reliable services.
And another question, does Verizon own a site at the middle school, which is Ingrid B. Lacy Middle School? Do you also have a tower there? Is it a 4G tower?
I'll let somebody get ready to answer that question. I'm hoping Joanna or Melvin knows the answer to that specific question. Verizon does not, does not have any 5G service in the Bay Area.
I can take this, Paul. I think you're talking about the Highway 1 South Pacific macro site, which is located close to Highway 101. This, this is only a 4G site, and this one is within the low elevation and in between our target site. And that side, we have a hill in between, which is about 900 feet in elevation. So it's basically blocking that macro site from our target site.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
So I, I share a lot of the same concerns that Commissioner Biggs presented at the planning commission meeting. We've had a lot of feedback from our community about this, and our community's scared, right? So they have a lot of fear. And I want to know how your community does that.
How we address the fear, is that the question?
Yes.
And I, I have been representing Verizon Wireless and are in these wireless network developments for over 20 years. And this fear has been present since wireless service began in 1985 in the Bay Area. And it wasn't until the mid-'90s that Congress took, took a look at it and, and President Clinton signed the Telecommunications Act of 1996 that established FCC guidelines of what exposures were considered safe. And to the extent that we comply with those, then that, as you know, takes the question off the desk for your counsel to decide. And I think what I should do is turn it over now to Raj Mathur of Hammond Edison, who sits on the IEEE Committee that recently reviewed the standard and can explain a little bit more about how the standard is established and why the public can rely on that federal limitation. Raj, are you there?
Hey Paul, just one thing really quickly, councilor. One of the things I want to note is that we are working on a website that should be available within the next week or so that you all and your constituents will have access to, will have all the information that you all are looking for. Just provide another's place, what, one central place with all the questions that folks have regarding, you know, the styles and facilities as well.
Thank you.
I will send that out to you as well.
I can add a little bit more to that, if I may. The, as I said, the RF exposure levels here are extremely low. You know, 2.4% of the FCC limit. And there's three main reasons why, why that is. The first, as I think Paul touched on, is that this is an extremely low-power facility. It's 10 to 20 times lower power than what Verizon calls the macro sites. Those are the ones on taller poles or building rooftops with multiple antennas. The second reason is that the antenna, the energy it emits is not equal in all directions. The energy is in a narrow beam going out towards the horizon, 45 feet above ground where the antenna is. So very little energy actually goes down to the ground. And the third reason is that the energy from the antenna falls with the square of the distance. What that means is that when you go twice as far away, the energy falls by the square of two or four times. When you go 10 times far away, the energy falls by the square of 10 or 100 times. So there's an exponential drop in radio frequency energy with distance. And then just adding to what Paul said about the FCC standard, that was established in 1996. It was just last year, late last year reaffirmed by the FCC. They found no basis to change the standard. There are several other independent standards. One is IEEE Institute of Electrical Electronic Engineers, and I'm part of the subcommittee that sets that standard. And our standard is extremely similar to the FCC standard. The other important one is ICNORP, which is the European Union standard. And that standard is also extremely similar to the FCC standard. And the site would meet both those standards. So I'll stop there, but I'm happy to talk more about radio frequency exposure or the standards if you wish. Thank you.
If, if I may, and I'll, I'll be very brief. I just want to add one point, and that is that the point of the small cells is to bring the the facility close to the end user, close to the phone. People forget that the phone has to talk to the tower, just like the tower has to talk to the phone. So if you have a distant, high-powered macro cell, and those are 40,000 watts, and we're at 500 watts next to the high school, somebody's phone, if it's trying to talk to a distant tower, will have to raise its energy up to 1,000 times to talk to that tower. But if you have a, a low wattage nearby small cell, that phone in this, in a student's pocket or wherever it may be, does not need to increase power to by as much as 1,000 to talk to that facility. So there is a great benefit, in fact, in, in having antennas close to the end user, these low wattage antennas close to the end user. Raj, I don't know if you want to confirm or comment on that.
Sure, I can maybe add a little bit more. So the, your, your phone is the single largest source of radio frequency exposure that anybody is likely to receive. So when a site is further away, your phone has to try really hard to communicate with it. And so it can ramp up power, and generally phones are able to ramp up power to approach the FCC limit. So again, when it has to try really hard, it ramps up power, approaches the FCC limit, has to communicate with a site further away. When there's a site nearby, the phone doesn't have to try so hard, and so it can sometimes operate at minimal overload and minimal, minimal power to communicate with this, with this site, and so the RF exposure levels reduce. You know, there are obviously other sources of radio frequency exposure. Just to give you some other examples, there's a, you know, Wi-Fi router, which most people have. Typical RF exposure levels from that are about 1% of the FCC limit. Microrelevan is another one. I've measured levels as high as about 50, 60% of the FCC limit near a microrelevan.
So I realize that we cannot deny this based on environmental concerns or health effects, but that doesn't mean that, that our community doesn't have those concerns, right? So what, and I appreciate all the information that you just shared and the fact that you're going to be creating a website, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. So can there be some outreach to our community to let them know about these things? Like, here's a website that you can go to. And I, I think I just want to, that extra, extra care for my community is what I'm looking for. That that makes sense.
Yes, we, and we will be putting, putting up the website. It will have links to WHO, World Health Organization, American Cancer Society, FCC, other webpages that provide third-party confirmation of the the sa, the safety of the facilities that, that we are putting forward. And we will be reaching out to the community to try and direct them to that webpage so that they have an opportunity to look at it.
And have some simple information on there, too? Be great.
Yes.
Because you know, all of this is very technical, and when there's fears, the technicalities aren't going to matter, because they're still going to be afraid. But we need to be able to speak to our community so that they can hear it and they can feel it. So that's, my main concern is all of the feedback that we have gotten from the neighborhoods, and I think I'm going to stick with that, but we'll hear from them soon, huh? Soon?
Yes, absolutely. I just had one more question. I'm sorry to...
Me, too.
Oh, good. It's not just me. I think this is a question for Paul. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
It's Allbritton.
Allbritton, thank you. I'm looking at a brief that was submitted to us by the appellant, and it just makes absolutely contrary statements to what you just answered in regard to the area where the white gap area is shown, and Verizon's analysis of its gap in coverage. And it states that Verizon does not need the proposed small cell facility to remedy any gap in their personal wireless service. Instead, Verizon has proffered an utterly baseless claim without any proper evidentiary support that Verizon needs a proposed facilities to remedy the gaps in Verizon's personal wireless services. I feel like this is saying, you don't need this. You're saying, here's our map, we do need this. How am I supposed to rectify those two completely opposite claims?
Well, I think, if I may, yeah, if I may. Under California law and under federal law today, Verizon Wireless does not need to show a coverage gap for a small cell in the right-of-way. The FCC Small Cell Order in 2018 specifically says that we don't need to show a coverage gap in order to, for there to be a gap, we merely need to show that we're enhancing service, providing a new service. And so, and under California Public Utility Code, Section 7901, we have a compulsory right to be in the right-of-way, so we don't need to show coverage maps. So we don't generally do that. And we didn't do that when it was before the Planning Commission. Since it's been appealed to the City Council, we have put together a record that would stand up in federal court of the significant gap that is being, that we are trying to fill. Now, that information didn't get submitted until our brief was submitted last week. So it's quite possible that the appellant just has not seen the gap analysis that we've provided. We specifically prepared, my office specifically prepares that document so that it can be submitted in federal court. We also submit the alternatives analysis into federal court. And that, in most cases, we have been defending local jurisdictions from neighbor lawsuits that challenge our facilities. So we have successfully recently defended the city of Berkeley, the county of Sonoma, the city of Palo Alto. I could go on and on, but the documents we've now provided give the evidence to show, first, there's a significant gap, second, this is the least intrusive means of filling it, and those are the two prongs of the federal law under the Ninth Circuit case law to show that denial of the site would constitute a prohibition of service.
Okay, that answers my question. It's about timing. I certainly can say that we've heard from members of the community that, you know, attest to themselves to the gap, and the dropped calls, et cetera. So I think perhaps Ms. Wayne was the one who referenced, people know that there's a gap, a coverage gap there, or maybe it was Ms. Keener who said that, but I was just having a hard time rectifying those two competing claims, but you've cleared it up for me, thank you, in terms of the timing of the documents. And Counselor Member Vatalas, you had another question?
Since you were talking about RF, is there a percentage of people that are affected by the RF factors there?
Paul Allbritton here, and then I'll let, I don't know if there's a solid answer to that question, but electromagnetic sensitivity has not been recognized by federal courts as a disability under ADA. We cited a recent Seventh Circuit case where they, it said that it's not clear whether it's a physical or emotional circumstance, but in any case, it's not a recognized disability. And the emissions, again, from this particular facility, the nearest building are going to be 300 times below the federal standard, and at the base of the facility, 50 times below the federal standard. So these are, these particular small cells, as I keep saying, are very low wattage facilities because we're only trying to cover a very small area to provide that facilities close to the end user. So I do not have an answer for the number of electromagnetic sensitive persons because it's not a clearly defined diagnoses that, if it were, we could deal with frequencies or RF effective radio emissions levels, but it's, I think that's really the crux of the issue.
Thank you.
Raj, do you have anything to add to that?
I'll just add that there's actually an extremely large safety factor built into the standard. There's a 54th safety factor. So the FCC public limit is set 50 times below where the first effects were observed. And then again, as Paul said, this site is further 40 times below that level, so we're at extremely low levels of radio frequency exposure.
Okay, other questions? There was a one-minute rebuttal, time set aside, if I'm not mistaken, City Clerk Coffee, is that correct?
Yes, they have one minute remaining for rebuttal, and that would occur after a public comment.
Oh, right. You keep telling me that. Thank you very much. Shall we move to public comment, then?
Thank you for letting us make our presentation.
Thank you.
Can we take a break?
Shall we land on a five-minute break?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I have 9:33 on my clock. I hope it's right. Let's resume at 9:38.
My name is Anita, and I just wanted to say that Ms. Keener from Verizon, at the beginning of her presentation, stated that the reason, one of the reasons for this is because people are telecommuting, and there is a lot of need now for broadband. The problem with that argument is that the average 4G LTE download speed is 42.9 megabits per second. All the localities in the area are moving towards gigabit fiber, which gives you 1,000 megabits per second. And this is what, it will address that problem, if that is indeed the problem that you're trying to solve. So that's 42.9 megabits per second versus 1,000 megabits per second. The second thing that I wanted to say was Mr. Raj Mathur, the electrical consultant for Verizon, stated that RF energy is most concentrated at the source and falls away quickly with distance squared. Now, the source is at a school. This is where your children are for six to eight hours a day, not theirs. So please take that into consideration, as you, as he says, that it falls away as you move away from the source. Secondly, I don't think we should pat ourselves on the back saying that we fall within or well within FCC limits. As they pointed out, this was done at the time of President Clinton. They have not been updated. Those FCC RF limits are atrociously high. We need to look at better limits. We, as Californians, as Pacificans, can do better. Lastly, I'm a cybersecurity expert who has worked with the United States House of Representatives, with the Senate, Department of Homeland Security currently, et cetera. Cybersecurity is a huge deal for localities and for individuals, especially for cities. Livermore, Albany, Baltimore, et cetera, have been hit with cybersecurity crimes within the last year. Baltimore transferred 6 million to pay for ransomware attack in August, August 28, 2019, actually, was when it happened. So we need to be careful with wireless systems. There are wired systems that bring very high-speed broadband to a community. We need to look at this with a futuristic approach and make sure that we are doing right by our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Alexander Prisagney. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's actually Linda Prisagney. I'm just on Alexander's machine. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you. Okay, well, I wanted to say that I see that they finally provided an evidence of a gap in coverage that extends up Terranova Boulevard, but on the original alternate-site analysis for Redwood Way, the applicant confirmed that antennas at higher elevations will perform better. There are videos on YouTube of Verizon CEO Lowell McAdam and the field engineer Jason somebody, oh, somebody, saying that small cells can reach 2,000 to 3,000-foot ranges. So they belong up higher and away from main streets, I believe. And I wanted to say, I've been to three of these Zoom meetings, and the applicant keeps changing stories. First, it's going to extend to the whole valley, but then, as they admitted, it only services the high school. The high school one, it only services the high school grounds. First, it works better up high, now it works better down low. Don't worry, the signals only go horizontally. Well, but what about the person who's, it's outside their children's bedroom window, and these are going to go horizontally? That's troublesome. So regarding the placement, there's a proximity impact on home prices because, and there's an extremely negative perception of having them installed on school grounds. That came home glaringly obvious to me, you know, that the people living in the homes now are so impacted. When I heard a 16-year-old, I seen the planning department, please do not put a radiating antenna 20 feet from myself and my 14-year-old brother's bedrooms. I think it's really sad if we can't do better than that. The high school location, too, it should just not be near children. The Planning Commission had until September. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought I heard something. They had until September, and I really believe the Planning Commission should be using the shot clock time to hear from the public, because there's so much information here that the City Council really needs to understand, and the planning department, too, we all have to really look into this. Mike O'Neill's question about density, the answer to that is that these are going to end up being very dense because they have limited range. And the RF emissions, that's an issue, too, because eventually they'll come in bursts, but they're measured by averages. I know this is so complicated and technical, but that's why we need to take our time. Very important, Dr. Bott requested public records, which he was going to share with others in his coalition called Cal Coast for Responsible Tech. Rather than put in eight separate requests or waiting for the one to share, he was never provided the public information, so none of us have it. So we have his original request, his follow-up request, but we have not had a chance to look at public records to see if there's material relevant to our appeal. That's key. I would be very alarmed if you would deny this appeal. I think the City Council needs to do all it can to protect citizens from health hazards and property devaluation. Please consider changes to city codes to reflect these priorities, and don't let Verizon or Modus dictate that these antennas be installed feet away from people's bedrooms and at our schools. And the analyses of alternative spots are completely unconvincing to me as well. I saw things where they rejected certain sites.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I thank you very much for your time.
Sarah, I can't hear you.
Next, please.
Okay, Elizabeth, go ahead. Sorry.
Next, we'll hear from Michael Cole. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, just to confirm, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. My name's Dr. Michael Cole. And first, just to say before calling cell tower, just congratulations on the council for moving forward with my brother's K-4 challenge. That's great to see, and it makes me proud as a Pacifican to see that. Regarding the cell phone towers, I am a professor at UC Berkeley, and I do clinical neuroscience research. And as a part of my clinical neuroscience research, I have previously used RF pulses. And in human studies, we're not looking at specifically the effects of RF pulses, it's secondary to what we're investing. But because we're using the RF pulses, we are intimately familiar with the physiological effects of, potential physiological effects of RF pulses, and the extent to which the strength that they need to be to generate physiological effects. And I, you know, not enough time to go into the details, and a lot of it has already been addressed, but just in short, to say that the intensity of the RF pulses that are used by these cell towers are not sufficient to generate physiological effects. And I feel that that's very clear, and it's been touched on before, and myself as an independent assessor of that, I feel very comfortable with that, including, I live right next door to Terranova. My kids, one kid went to Terranova, another kid is starting freshman year, and I don't have concerns to that end. And just last point with that, too, is that the levels, the intensities are hundreds to thousands less than the federal guidelines, so it's not even close to the federal guidelines for the limits. And congruent with that, the medical organizations have stated that they don't have they don't have concerns, including the American Cancer Society and others. You know, the other aspect is the, is also a safety concern, but from a different perspective, that we can confirm there's no signal in Terranova. And so my daughter, four years there, she would be there for zero period when it'd be dark out. And there are times when the teacher didn't show up, there are no open rooms, she couldn't call. Likewise, in the evening after extracurricular activities. And if we needed as parents to reach, reach our children. So that's a big issue. I've got a freshman starting next year. I don't want this to continue. And then in terms of the appellate's concerns with the aesthetics, I saw the picture. I think the aesthetics is not an issue. It's already on a pre-existing telephone pole. Property value, actually on, you know, increases, it's on Terranova. I can't foresee that being a big issue. And the last point is with the six, I think we could rely on Verizon to, we, it's clear that there's a gap in signal. We can rely on Verizon to figure out how to fill that gap. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cole.
Next, we'll hear from a call-in listener with the last four digits, 1541. Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Can you? Deputy City Clerk.
Say that again, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry, I don't hear the caller. Could you repeat the digits of the, of the phone number one more time?
Yes, we have a call-in listener with their hand raised. The phone number is 912. Oh, I can't see the whole. The last four digits are 1541.
Caller with 1541. Could we go on to the next one, please, and come back to this one?
They've just unmuted themselves. I think they may be trying to speak.
Oh, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
My apologies for that. Hi there, I appreciate you listening to my concern. I'm a resident in the Sun Valley neighborhood here, just a few minutes away from Terranova. And I very much do oppose this new cell tower going up in that area for a handful of reasons. Some already stated. One, the mere fact that Terranova Boulevard is a main street where we continually, our whole family drives multiple times a day to get to and from school and work. And to have any other potential obstruction in case this facility does, you know, need maintenance or goes wrong or, you know, something happens. If that one, two lane turns to one, it just adds to the current congestion we deal with right now. That's already congested with during school hours. So that's definitely a concern for people that are living in the valley right here. To hear that this, this tower does nothing in terms of an emergency, you know, I feel like, you know, it shouldn't be going up. This should be emergency only. I also know that there's, you know, plenty of other spaces that this tower could potentially go up if necessary. And it absolutely shouldn't be on our streets. I mean, Verizon said that they are looking for places and they, you know, found spaces that are the least invasive. But they're right on our streets. They're right outside of, or they're planning on putting this right outside of school and right outside, you know, people's houses, right outside their windows. That's very invasive when you have people there daily, having to see this multiple times a day as just a constant, you know, reminder that Verizon may potentially put more up in other pockets of Pacifica. If we don't do something to really understand what's going on now, then who's to stop them from putting these small cells up everywhere? First, Delmar, you know, Sun Valley, Park Pacifica is likely to be next. They're going to be all over. So I really think we need to take a step back and do a lot more research before we allow them to just start building on the streets that we use every day. In addition to that, quite frankly, it is not pretty to see, you know, an enlarged pole. Just, just the aesthetic to that school, you know, I think that would destroy that. Everybody that would drive by, it's right in front of the school. You can't miss it. And I think it's unfortunate, you know, for any student, any parent that spends, you know, eight hours a day at that school to have to be, you know, underneath that. And you see that as a reminder constantly. I appreciate you listening to me and I really, really hope you think this through and, and deny Verizon's application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from listener Haiko Ritter. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hello, my name is, is Haiko Ritter and I'm a resident of Pacifica. And I am calling to support the appeal and deny the application of the antenna outside of, or out front of Terranova High School. I think it is very, even though Verizon says that they're trying to put it in locations that are, you know, not in the way of others. I mean, this is directly in front of a high school and across from people's homes. And a council member, apologies that I can't remember who made the statement, said that the fear is very real. It doesn't matter if, you know, if that fear is based on truths. The fact that the theory exists is dramatically going to hurt those property values directly across the street. Right? The aesthetics, right? When they look out front of their windows, right? They're going to see, like, all the radios are plastered, you know, about 10 feet up from the pole, right? That's going to be right in there, in their view. And so for those reasons, aesthetic and property values. And I really don't think that Verizon did their due diligence to look at alternatives other than the little macros on top of the utility poles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Erin Macias. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, council and staff. Erin Macias from Pacifica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Without question, public participation is, in our constituency, is a fundamental right. COVID-19 has severely impacted the public's ability to participate. One, because we cannot meet in person. And two, because not all residents are tech savvy and do not have access to the technology necessary to participate, including phone-in participation, since they have to navigate the website in order to do that. In order for me, as someone who has a basic understanding of technology, I have to toggle between the agenda and the Zoom to figure out where we are in the agenda packet. In doing that, my Zoom screen minimized on me. And I, had I not been able to figure out how that had happened, I would not have been able to click the raise my hand icon. The Zoom link on the city website did not work. So I had to click on the agenda and then cut and paste that into my browser to join this meeting. My old computer and my Kindle do not support Zoom. So this limits access to those who are socio-economically disadvantaged or who have older technology. Then, if I don't have an email, I can't participate either. So joining this meeting for the first time was not easily accessible. How is this providing accessibility to the general public? Even Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer was having barriers to technology earlier this evening. This problem certainly applies to Wednesday as well. We need to be able to participate freely in public meetings. Additionally, it's estimated that 50% of all Bay Area residents could not afford internet bills during COVID. These blatant barriers to public participation should require the city of Pacifica to continue this item until we can meet in person. Adding to Dr. Bat's comments, there is no immediate reason to approve this wireless communication facility. As Paul stated in his own roundabout ways, these technology laws were drafted in a way to circumvent public input. This application should be, not be exempt from CEQA. Dr. Cole specifically mentioned RFs. Radiation falls on a spectrum from ionizing to non-ionizing. RFs are non-ionizing. It is currently unknown where 5G technology falls on that spectrum. We do not know if this ionizing radiation, because we do not, they don't need to disclose to the public to switch from 4G to 5G. These unknowns and the ability, inability for Pacifica general public to actively participate warrants a denial of any approval at this time. We pride ourselves in being stewards to the environment. It is a false presumption on a part of Verizon staff that all residents have access to Verizon-specific technology. For those of us who do, we have effective cell service within our community. This minor inconvenience with no contractual promises and a failed track record by Verizon with chronic incomplete coverage does not warrant a hasty approval for this wireless project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from Marla Lenardi. Please identify yourself for the record.
Maria.
Hi, yeah, Maria. Thanks, Sue. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, City Council. I, my name is Maria Lenardi, for the record. And I am a single mother of three boys. I am a Pacifica native. I'm very proud to say that. I know many people that have had to leave town for various reasons. I graduated from Terranova High School in 1998. And my oldest son, who is now 22 and goes to college in Colorado, graduated there as well. And I also have my middle son, who is now going to be a junior, attending Terranova High School as well. We live actually not too far from Terranova, actually not very far from where the Redwood appeal is actually happening for the other small cell tower. And I'm very concerned about these installations happening and have been for some time. The only reason that I was notified was because the principal sent an email to the parents of Terranova High School. And I just feel, you know, like Erin Macias had just said, I do feel like it's, it's very unfair for the community that cannot attend in person. I've spoken with a lot of senior citizens who, you know, do not, you know, they're, they're with us with wanting to appeal this, but they also have no way of accessing the internet or, you know, things like that, that those of us can do. And so I'm just, you know, and I've been saving over the years in hopes to buy the house that I've been renting for 10 years. And unfortunately, if this all gets approved, I don't think I'm going to be doing that. I don't think, I feel comfortable in this time where we're all, you know, it's COVID and we're sheltering in place and a lot of us already have fears around health and safety. I think that this is not the right time to do this. And if it does need to be done, then, you know, move them in a different place where they're not right in front of the high school, where I'm not going to be sitting at the baseball field watching my son pitch a baseball game and seeing this huge tower going up above, you know, everything. It's so beautiful here. That's one of the reasons why I think a lot of people gravitate towards Pacifica is the nature and the beauty. And I just think that that, aside from the property values, I think that's just going to really take away from the beauty of our town. And I just am asking that careful consideration is taken in making this decision. And, you know, we've had a lot of people in the community that have signed petitions and that have raised concern. And I just think that all of our concerns need to be considered while, while doing this. So anyways, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll hear next from June Kafka. Please identify yourself for the record.
Oh. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, shall I start over?
Yeah, the clock has not started, so yes, you may begin.
Okay, my name is June Kafka and I'm a former staff member of Terranova High School. I worked there for 20 years. And I used to walk to work most days because I live very close. I live on Redwood Way. And it was a beautiful walk and I enjoyed looking at the cherry trees and I'm hoping it can stay that way. There are two reasons we should not put a WCF near Terranova High School. And they can have to do with the pandemic. First, we are staying in our homes much more now. And the beauty that we see these days is from out, out of our windows. We're not traveling to Europe or Asia. We don't have that opportunity. So we need to protect the beauty that's around us. And we need to protect it for our children. The future is unclear. Who knows when and if we will be able to travel. And the second reason is that many people are losing jobs. The economy is going down and we need to protect the value of our homes. A WCF near Terranova High School will only bring down house values in the area. We may need to sell to pay for healthcare, et cetera. We need to protect house values for our children as well. With these two reasons in mind, I, I ask you to please reject the WCF near Terranova High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hear next from username Dimpna. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, this is Dimpna O'Connell. Shall I continue?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. At the last meeting, when Joanna Wang was asked, "Why not put the poles in another location like Artega School?" She actually said, "They were thinking about putting it near Artega School, but they said there was too many children there." Now, anybody in their right mind, that's just the obvious reason why you should not put it beside a little baby's window. So if there's like 300 children in Artega and there's one child that passed away, like, do, do the, like, what is the difference there? That's very frustrating. And also, at the public meetings, there should be a public meeting. 80% of our neighbors do not know what is going on. And I think Verizon has orchestrated it to be like this. At the last meeting, we were allowed to speak at the beginning of the meeting and I had no option to disagree with the information before the vote was taken. And what I would like to see is, how much money is Verizon paying Pacifica for this? I know, I sincerely hope it's not profits before people. This is not why we live in Pacifica or why we purchase property in Pacifica. And I hope it's not like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are currently no other hands raised for public comment, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, so if anyone who's listening wishes to speak on this item, if you could please raise your hand so that Deputy City Clerk Brooks will see it and be able to bring you on to the meeting. We'll give it a couple of seconds here to give people a chance to do that. If anyone would like to join and share their comments.
We've had one hand raised from Tiana Cole. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Tiana Cole. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I recently graduated from Terranova High School. I'm going to be, going to UC Berkeley, majoring in chemical engineering. And throughout my entire four years at Terranova, cell signal has been terrible. During my freshman year, I did wrestling and my practice would go until like nine o'clock at night. So it would be dark and it would be really hard to get ahold of my parents to come pick me up because there would be no signal. So I think that a lot of the reasons that people are giving for not having the cell tower are kind of ridiculous because what, from what I've seen with what the cell tower will look like, it's going to be the same color as a telephone that is already there. And unless you're specifically looking for it, I think it's very unlikely that anybody would notice it. So I don't really see how that would decrease property values at all because there aren't even that many houses near the telephone pole that I saw that. because there aren't even that many houses near the telephone pole that I saw that it would be on. Because I actually live right above Terranova, and I just don't see how that would be an issue. I think that it's kind of ridiculous for people to be thinking that this is going to be a health hazard because I think already clearly we've shown that it's not going to be a health hazard. There isn't going to be 5G. It's just going to be a normal cell tower, which we really need. Students need to be able to contact their parents. And I think that the people in the general vicinity that do live near Terranova will also benefit from this. I know that I've had connection issues when I'm having Zoom meetings for school that if I had better cell service from Verizon, then it would be so much better for me to connect and have my education. So I think that the reasons that people are giving to not have the cell tower just don't outweigh the clear benefits of having the cell tower there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other hands raised?
Not currently. Yes, one just was raised from Lindsay Creighton. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Creighton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, thank you so much for holding this meeting tonight. And I just wanted to express my concerns, of course, along with many other people tonight. I am a new mother. I live in Pacifica currently, and I take my son for walks often in back of the valley because it's always sunny up back there. And I just, I gravitate towards the nature here in Pacifica. That's why I moved here in the first place. And so just thinking of adding more, you know, cell towers on top of our electrical poles is extremely disappointing because I feel like it's just going to take away from the beauty around us back here. So that's one thing. And speaking to what Tiana was just expressing, I totally hear what she was saying. So, but, and so why, I just, I'm wondering why we can't just come to some sort of conclusion that includes everyone? And the conclusion would be just moving the cell tower. You know, you can still get, you know, cell access to Terranova High School, which is extremely important. I understand that. So why not just moving it to a location that doesn't affect property values? That doesn't affect the aesthetics of the location and yet still gets coverage back there? And, you know, and that was another thing, too, is, you know, my husband and I are currently renting in Pacifica, and we do live in Lean to Mar, but we don't live quite back in the valley. And that was actually where we have been scoping out real estate. We would like to purchase a home back there. But it's deeply concerning about, you know, this, the amount of cell tower applications coming through and being approved because, you know, that means that could potentially affect property value in the future if they needed to install more on top of more cell towers. So that's my concern, and thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Do we have more speakers? Deputy City Clerk? Brooks?
We have another hand raised from a speaker who called in earlier, but I'm not sure if it's the same speaker. They have two usernames, so I'll just ask them to speak. If it's to the same topic, though, you are only allowed to speak one time. This is Dinesh and Anita.
Good evening. This is Dinesh. I have a brief question or a comment. I don't think there's any question that the area around Terranova School and the school students themselves need better coverage. There's no argument about that. The question is, can that be provided in some other aesthetic, pleasing, and happy way that the residents of Pacifica are comfortable with? And I believe that's the question that needs to be asked of Verizon as to where they can put their sources and how they can provide service to the blind spot without riling up all of these concerns. So I think that question needs to be asked rather than we try to solve it. And I'd like to hear from them about what they have to say. Thank you.
There's no other hands raised at this time, Mayor Protem.
All right, we'll give it another couple of seconds. Then I think it is time for us to bring it back. And we'll close public comment.
Well, we want to ask the applicant if they want their minute of rebuttal.
Yes. Applicant? Who would be taking the lead on that?
Paul Albrighton here.
Okay. Would you like to take that minute for rebuttal?
I'm waiting to be accepted in.
There you are. Hello.
Yep, I had, I was, kept getting a screen that the host hadn't let me in yet. Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, I very much appreciate all of your time and all of the council's questions. Just very quickly, it was mentioned that the FCC rule came up during the Clinton administration, but was actually after an initiated process in 2013 was just updated by the FCC a few months ago. I haven't met Dr. Cole or his daughter, but I think that their words of saying rang very clearly. A seven-foot extension on an existing utility pole is a very aesthetically minimal way of providing the service that we're trying to provide. The utility pole is there, and we can't move it, and the claimed effects on property values from those aesthetics, I think, are minimal. Any claim of property value decline because of RF emissions, of course, is barred by federal law. Our maintenance schedule will only require maintenance approximately every six months. And I see I'm running out of time, so I just want to say that we feel that this is important service for the community that Verizon Wireless is looking forward to providing, and I'll answer any further questions you have.
Thank you. City Attorney? Is it appropriate for asking council members if they have additional questions at this point? How do we proceed?
Yes. Now you would, now you should officially close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for deliberations, and then ask council if they have any questions.
Okay, I officially closed the public hearing, and I'm bringing it back to council for deliberations. Do you have any questions? Mr. O'Neill?
To the City Attorney, the app, the appellant, prior to the meeting, didn't give us any of those slides or whatever, but he cited a whole lot of legal cases, and I know it went rather quickly. So in general, what's your feelings about the legal basis he cited for during his slideshow?
Well, I'd have to say that I believe that what has happened with telecommunications and with the most recent orders that have come in as, you know, come into effect as early as this year, that the parameters for regulating telecommunications facilities, especially in the right of way, have been limited to, restricted to a great extent. And what the federal government, the FCC, has said essentially is that they have made a policy decision. And the policy decision that they have now imposed on cities is that while there is, there may be a burden to the public in terms of allowing more telecommunications facilities, that burden and those impacts are worth it because of the greater public need for more connectivity with telecommunications. And so that, it's important to remember that in terms of what all the regulations that have recently come down and that have been coming down. And I would say that I disagree with the arguments that have been made by the appellant, and I agree with staff's representation in the staff report with regard to the authority or the ability of the council to do any more regulating than they are already doing. Unfortunately, when we're dealing with small wireless facilities in the right of way, there is not much authority granted to the cities to regulate, other than what the city is currently doing.
So then, just to, you used the word restriction, restricted. So they really, the federal government has really restricted our abilities to deny an application such as this?
Yes. And while there are a number of jurisdictions that are trying to fight these recent FCC orders, until there is an order where those challenges have prevailed, we are following the orders that are currently in place that you have, you've heard staff describe tonight and in the staff report.
There's also, and I think it was in a slide or else at least in the packet, of a list of cities that have updated their codes to, I guess, today's standard. Are our codes very outdated?
Well, it's really more, what a lot of cities are doing now is one method to try to provide the most regulatory control as possible, is a lot of cities are updating their code to provide for objective standards that would apply to all utilities, which cities can do, that are not subjective, but object, but, not subjective, but objective. And when they are updating their codes, they are providing for certain types of processing that wireless facility companies could follow to expedite processing. So they are updating their code to allow for ministerial approval for certain types of facilities that meet city standards and objectives that they are creating. If they are objective and they apply, you know, equally to all utilities, we can impose those restrictions. If the telecommunications facilities choose not to follow those regulations to allow for expedited processing, then they would follow the process that we have tonight, which is to seek discretionary approval for cell sites.
So by, two questions to that, you said all utilities, so that any update would also affect PG&E, North Coast Water, Comcast, all various utilities? And then?
That wanted to cite their utilities on our streetlights or utility poles in the right of way.
And then you also mentioned that the updating city codes administratively, which means there were just, that staff would just approve it, and it really wouldn't be necessary to come to the planning commission or city council like we have it now.
That, if the city were to go through the process of updating its code, that those updates would definitely come back to the council for ultimate approval. But the concept is that staff would be creating a process whereby if the telecommunications companies were to follow our objective guidelines and specifications for installation of wireless facilities, then they would not need to go through this discretionary review process. They would go through a ministerial process that would be approved by the planning director, as opposed to going through planning commission review and then council review.
Just like if you hit all the code requirements for setback, height limit?
Yes, and by doing that, by providing a more expedited process, it gives cities a greater ability to regulate because we are not demanding that they cite facilities in these locations or they cite them with specific specifications. But if they want to follow this particular expedited process, then they do have to follow those more stringent city local regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions from council members?
Deliberation?
Or deliberation from council members?
I think that this is a hugely difficult issue. I was on planning commission. We saw eight or 10 of them come through planning commission when I was there. And it was difficult then, too, because I think the aesthetics are not an issue. I mean, it's just an extension on a pole, but I understand people's concerns. And like Council Member Beer said, people are worried. I think that's a big concern. I also think that there's a safety issue by not having cell service at the high school. I think that's a huge safety issue. This location is, to me, not directly in front of houses. There are not houses, really, I don't think, looking at this tower and would notice a difference unless it was clearly pointed out to them. So this is very difficult because I'm going in circles because I can see the circles of this whole thing. I can see the positives. I can see the negatives. I understand each and every one of the speakers and their concerns. So I'm going to let someone else deliberate, but this is a difficult situation.
Councilmember Beer or O'Neill?
I'll go ahead. I had a question about the petition. So there was a petition, correct? And was that for, was the, did the petition come in for both sites? Was it directed at both sites? Or can someone tell me that?
Councilmember Beer, are you describing the change.org petition?
Yeah.
So I've seen a couple iterations of that. Maybe other staff are more familiar than I am. But the general message from that that I took away was in opposition to 5G facilities in Pacifica. And as we've mentioned, the evidence we have is that this is a 4G facility, not a 5G facility. And in any case, the law prevents the city from considering what the technological implementation is. And to the extent that 5G is concerning to the community over health effects, we've also explained how the law prevents the city from considering that information in its decision on a particular application.
Okay. I know for a fact that cell service at Terranova is awful, so I have to, like, leave the building and go out to my car to make a phone call when I'm working there. So I understand that. I understand the need for cell service there. But what I'm hearing more of and what is more concerning to me is the fear that I'm hearing in the community. And for some reason, I just feel like I need to be that voice tonight, that I need to stand up for the people who are afraid in the community because there's just been so many, so many of them. And so that's where I'm at right now. I'm leaning towards speaking for the community that is so afraid. Anyone else?
Councilmember O'Neill?
Well, I've already chatted. Did you want to go?
Well, I think the role of the facilitator, the mini is to go last. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. You have been the mayor before, so I'll defer to your.
You are correct. According to Robert's rules, yes, that is correct, okay? The problem is, there's, my understanding, and please, City Attorney, correct me or staff, correct me, but there's very little wiggle room for us to deny this, this facility or this structure. And the, the data points that the appellant has brought up, due, from what I've been told over many years on council, even when we were on the school board, that this can't, it's basically, we can't change anything. We have to pretty much approve it. And I just, so if I am wrong, nobody's jumping up to tell me I'm wrong, so there's a city attorney, good.
Well, I would say that you're correct. I, I do not see any legal bases in the appeal that would warrant denial in terms of federal regulations or state law.
Okay, so then I, unless the chair wishes to make a comment, I would just make a motion that we deny the appeal. I don't, it's hard to jiggle to the other side here. Hold on a minute, I need to.
Before you make the motion, I would like to make a comment, if it's all right. And then you can figure out how to do the motion. Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
I would like to acknowledge that a number of members of the community have significant concerns about this. And I personally visited the site, I've looked at the poll, I evaluated the material that was submitted to us. I, I do believe that the coverage issue is significant and I believe the greater good would be served by placing this poll in this location. With that said, I'm concerned about how we move forward in terms of community education and input. I realize, you know, we can't have a town hall every time someone has a question, but this has been an ongoing concern. And I think there, there are some very valid points that were made by Ms. Macias during her commentary about access and ability for people to give their input. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm interested, I'm willing to approve tonight to deny the appeal. But what I would like to do is find out a way for there to be more education, more opportunity for our citizens to have a dialogue, have an opportunity, not just to read a website, but to have their questions answered and to provide their input. I'm not sure what form that would take, especially in light of COVID, but I am challenging staff to help me think that through because as I understand, we are gonna get another chance at this kind of topic going forward.
I would ask, you know, since I know the appellant is the same gentleman that appealed tonight for the one in Redwood, that maybe that slideshow could be sent to council. So it's part of our packet and we can review it a little bit better for the next appeal. I also would, in the paperwork that we read, there was a couple cities have wrote letters to some organization that asked them to study the, the radiation thing. And if we wanted to look at, send in a letter in support of that, I believe it was some sort of state or a state agency or state organization and maybe place on the agenda at a later date of thoughts on updating our codes. So throwing that out for discussion or whatever, if we want to talk about that. For the letter, so letter, updating the codes. And what was the third thing I mentioned? Or was it only two? It's recorded or in the minutes, we'll see. So anyhow, I will make a motion. I'm assuming everybody's done. A resolute city council of the city of Pacifica denying the appeal and upholding planning commission approval of use permit UP 96-18, file number 2018-008, subject to conditions for wireless communications facility on an existing utility pole in the public right of way of Terranova Boulevard, approximately 870 feet north of Everglades Drive in the vicinity of 1450 Terranova Boulevard and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
Actually, Mr. Niblin, do you have any comments you want to say?
Nothing further, I'm sorry, nothing further at this point. I stated my, kind of the commission's sort of proceedings and I think they were definitely restated here at Lang.
Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk Coffee, will we have a roll call vote?
Yes, for agenda item number 14, as moved by council member O'Neil. I'll call out council members for a vote. Council member Beer?
No.
Council member O'Neil?
Yes.
Council member Butterlass?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beckmeyer?
Yes.
And that motion passes with a vote of four in favor, one opposed.
Three in favor, one opposed.
Sorry, a three in favor, one opposed, council member Beer is opposed and Mayor Martin has recused herself from this discussion and vote.
And, and can I make a short comment? This appeal is different from the next appeal. We will consider the next appeal wholly on its own merits, unattached to this one. Thank you.
I do want to, I do want to compliment the appellant though because of all the wireless telecommunications things I've sat through, I think this one was the most well-prepared with the, you know, with all the information and it seems like there's some case law that back them up, etc. And that's why I would like, on his next appeal, if he can provide some of that information ahead of time. Thank you.
Mayor Martin?
Yep, I'm back. All right, great. We will move on to item for consideration. Item number 16 is the update on public trash cans and illegal dumping.
Mayor, Mayor Martin, before we move on to item number 16, I, is there a statement that needs to be made for item number 15 regarding the continuation of that appeal?
Oh, is there? I thought we just had to remove it.
So we, we should, I would recommend that there's a motion to, to continue the item to a date specific. That would be September 14th. Let me make sure that that's the right date. Yes, September 14th, 2020.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we continue item number 15 for the planning commission appeal of 1,200 Danbin to date certain of September 14th, city council meeting.
Second.
And this is being done at the request of both applicant and the appellant.
Correct.
Motion by O'Neil, seconded by Butterlass. We have a roll call vote, please?
Now for vote, as moved by council member O'Neil, council member Beer?
Yes.
Council member O'Neil?
Yes.
Council member Butterlass?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And the motion to continue item number 15 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, John. Thanks for hanging in.
Thank you very much, John.
All right, so we'll move on to item 16 for consideration, update on public trash cans and illegal dumping. You're on mute.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Martin, Mayor Proton Beckmeyer and the, and the members of the Pacifica City Council. My name is Lorenzo Heinz, your assistant city manager. Glad to be with you tonight, closing out the evening. I'm here tonight with a update on public trash cans and illegal dumping. And so what we're asking you all to do tonight is to accept the report and provide feedback and direction regarding our efforts in this area. In the last six months, illegal dumping and illegal use of city garbage cans, beach area cans, bus stop cans, and city streets have increased dramatically. Now, we're confident that some of this has to do with the consistent shelter and place orders that the county has placed on us. However, this has been an ongoing concern for years. During fiscal year 2019-20 and continuing into 2021, the councils identified working on litter strategies and pilot programs as a priority. The recent wave of illegal dumping has increased this priority and has pushed us to immediate action. So the city staff and the city's waste management contractor, Recology of the Coast, recently began working to develop solutions to address this immediate issue. And so what I'm going to do tonight is just go through this bulletted list in the staff report and just tell you what we're doing and also tell you what next steps are. The ultimate objective here is to let you know that we're aware of it and that we're actively addressing this particular issue. So the first action step that we've taken is that the city code enforcement staff has worked with Recology to identify owners of business complexes where dumping is prevalent. Code enforcement staff begins the, the public nuisance abatement process by verbally notifying the owners to remove the trash and follows up if necessary with a written notice of violation. If the trash is not removed, then Recology may pick up the trash and charge that particular customer. Another action step is code enforcement staff and Recology have also worked on the drop-off container or the donation bins that are located on private property throughout the city. Several bins have been voluntarily removed and code enforcement continues to monitor the situation. Recology has removed discarded materials numerous times from several locations. Our third step, Recology has contacted SAM Trans regarding the overflowing trash cans located at SAM Trans bus stops and ascertain the pickup schedule, which is currently every Monday and Wednesday, and obtained a complete listing of all the service bus stop cans. Recology is reviewing the condition of the cans and the necessity of increasing the frequency of pickups. Our next step is our city staff has furnished Recology with a complete list of all city trash cans. City staff and Recology are working collaboratively to review each can's condition, placement, and desired pickup frequency necessary to eliminate can overload and to formulate a plan for Recology to begin servicing the cans as, as they can be accessed by Recology. And approximately 90% of our cans can be accessed by Recology. So those are the active steps that are going on right now. Our plan in the future is to have Recology formulate a new route that will service accessible city containers at a greater frequency. For instance, the beach parking lots will be picked up twice a day at the very beginning of the route and at the end of the route. Heavier populated areas will be earmarked for increased service as well. And this route will also work with code enforcement to eliminate dump materials on a timely basis.
I ask a question there?
Yes.
When you said they'll be picked up at the beginning of the route and the end of the route, does that mean beginning of day, end of day, or just whatever time the route starts?
I, I think it's approximately that. The routes are pretty long. And, you know, we're talking citywide routes here. And so, yeah, so there's gonna be a fair amount of time between the initial pickup and the last pickup.
Okay, because I just want to make sure they're not back to back, right? End of day, beginning of day?
No, that, that just wouldn't be feasible and wouldn't, wouldn't be feasible for Recology.
Got it, thanks.
We're gonna make sure that the cans need servicing when they come back and service them. That's, that's why they do all of this research on these cans to find out when, when's the most optimum time to service the can.
Got it, thank you.
And so the city will also work with Recology and work with SAM Trans to discuss the possibility of taking over servicing the bus stop cans and working with SAM Trans's contractor. They have an outside contractor which services their cans and maybe working with them to try to better serve those cans. City staff and Recology will determine the, you know, who will handle the remaining 10% of the cans that Recology can't get to. And that'll probably stay under the purview of the city, but at least we'll be able to collaborate with Recology on, on essentially all the cans. Cans located in areas that continue to be the target of the illegal dumping will be relocated to other areas of town. And these changes will be monitored. So I want to make it clear, we're not reducing the number of cans, but we're merely redeploying those cans. Recology will actively inspect bagged trash in the city for, to see if there is any envelopes or anything like that with names and addresses of people dumping materials. And if we're able to, we will charge them accordingly. And Recology and/or the city of Pacifica will actively promote the use of non-emergency police department number to report illegal garbage dumping. And lastly, the city and Recology will develop additional policies to bill non-compliant owners of private properties where illegal dumping continues to occur. So we wanted to make sure that you had an update as to what our current activities are and what our future activities are regarding our, addressing the illegal dumping and the overflow of trash cans throughout the city. And so I submit your questions and comments and thank you.
Any, I don't see any hands waving. Mike?
A question in regards to those for-profit little houses. They just seem to be a real big eyesore. Is there any way we can pass some sort of ordinance that they're not allowed in town? Or some, something where if the property owner, if it isn't kept neat and clean, that there's a penalty to the property owner? Because I would imagine the property owner is being paid rent by that box company. Because it is a for-profit place, not a, you know, goodwill or Salvation Army or whatever.
Right. And so as far as the code enforcement and the legality surrounding those bins, I'll have to check in with Director Wermeyerster or city attorney Kenyon, and I give you the legalities on that. And it looks like Director Wermeyerster is ready.
Hi, everybody. Tina Wermeyerster, planning director. So we do have code enforcement go out and contact both the property owner and the owners of the donation bins. And we do get fairly rapid response. I'm not gonna say it's immediate, but it's fairly rapid response. They are a problem right now such that as soon as they're picked up, there's another pile, it seems like, around them. And even sometimes if the donation company removes the bin, for a little while at least, people will keep dumping donated items in the same spot. There are some legal considerations with these bins in terms of regulating them and I'll let Michelle talk about that.
We do have some constraints. These donation bins have been ruled to, the companies who have donation bins, donation bins have been ruled to have a First Amendment right to have their bins cited on private property. So our ability to regulate is somewhat restricted, but we definitely still have some tools. And we have been talking to staff about different possibilities for how to better regulate donation bins.
They consider public nuisances or health hazards or stuff?
Yes, yes. You know, we've, we, we are considering what other nuisance abatement processes we can follow. And as well as, you know, as planning director Wermeyerster indicated, there is a lot of cooperation from these donation bin companies. It's just a question of, are they able to? Are they able to pick up um, stray materials or donated items? As quickly as we might need them to. I think that's the issue.
Well, I know there's some items in me. If you look at the side of it, it says shoes, clothes. And stuff like that, but I've seen mattresses, chairs, all sorts of bric-a-brac there, so. Yeah. Thank you.
Hey Lorenzo, um. I know you talked about like the, the hotspot areas, right, where there's a lot of dumping and I. Honestly, since shelter in place, I haven't like been out and about very much, but well, so will we able, will, will we be able? To like see where those hotspots are and like, I like have some input?
Uh, yeah, you will, you will. And uh, but what we'd like to do is come up with a plan. Um, for first of all, redeploying these cans. And then as part of that presentation, explain and show where we are seeing uh, frequent illegal dumping. Um, luckily, by partnering with Recology, their drivers, their trucks are out all the time. And so they provide a consistent monitor for us. In addition to, you know, an excellent code enforcement staff, and that makes for a pretty powerful combination for monitoring. Issues of dumping throughout the city. So we'll be able to pinpoint those, those items. Um, we may. You know, we, you may have to respect sensitivity because I don't, I don't want any particular property owner to feel like we're picking on them. Um, so we may generalize a bit when we present this to you.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, hats off to Recology and the city for working together on this issue. It is the big issue, the dumping. Um, Recology has done their part for so long. Um, they help at the beach cleanups, et cetera, et cetera, and. And I always applaud them for all the work that they do specially for the city. Um, I do know it's a problem, um, when we talk about issues such as in front of a store and I won't name a name. Uh, those people may clean out their can five times, ten times a day. Because once they clean it out, just like you said, someone comes along and dumps all their household garbage. And now the can's full. Um, I work in Rockway, we have the same issue. We've actually seen people in their cars get out and dump a whole bag of garbage in our single can there. Uh, it, then it's full. And, and where does that leave the rest of the trash? So I, I know it's an issue. It's people behaving badly. And it's unfortunate that, that it keeps going on and on. And thank you for addressing the situation.
Sure. And one of the things we're looking at, and I'm sorry, Councilman O'Neil, I'll, I'll just say this real quick. One of the things we're looking at is. Alternate containers and alternate lids. For those containers and in the hopes that if the lids are restrictive enough. Then we'll only get the kind of debris that is intended for that can. And so if your intent is to empty all of your household trash into that can. That's going to be a pretty laborious affair.
I, I don't know, I had a cigarette can also in Rockway and we put a lid on it with small holes for cigarette butts. And people still seem to manage to take the lid off and put bags of dog poop. Inside of the cigarette container, when they could walk fifteen feet and dump it across the street, so. People will find a way, but I applaud that too.
Well, the, the beauty of this is, is I have the experience and skill of Chris Porter and her team over at Recology. And I have the experience and skill of Lisa and Sam over at Public Works, working to solve this, so. That's a, and we have code enforcement with Gwen and Tina, so that is a pretty powerful team and um. I, I'm pretty confident that we'll come up with a solution that um, will deter. Um, any, any potential illegal overflow of these cans.
Locks. Thanks.
We, do we have a requirement that every house at Pacifica has to have garbage service?
I believe so. Every property owner, yes.
Yeah, so there is a require, because I know there was in San Francisco, I wasn't, I thought we did here, but I wasn't quite sure.
Well, it, it actually, to be clear, it, it is not an absolute. Um, if, if, if a particular property owner could um. Make a showing that they could provide service on their own, then we would allow them to. Provide service on their own, but, but that is very difficult to show, so I don't think we've ever had that actually occur, so. Technically, somebody could. Provide their own garbage service, but they would have to make a big showing to the city about how they're doing that.
Well, I think there is stuff like I, I have been told that up in San Francisco, apartments of a certain, houses of a certain size. Have more frequent pickup, like, you know, some of them actually have it every day. And if, when you look and analyze that there's like, I don't know, I always, behind the Safeway in Manor, sometimes that. Alleyway just looks horro- horro- you know, horrendous. Maybe we need to have more frequent pickup there and have an ordinance that instead of. Whatever it is, once a week, twice a week, maybe it has to be every day, because there's a lot of apartments there, you know? I'm just throwing out an idea.
And that's one of the, the, um, that's one of the options and the strategies that Chris is looking at over at Recology. Uh, we've talked about reaching out to the owners of our large shopping uh, centers. And because some of them are owned by one entity and some of them are co-owned by um, the, the, the individual store owners. And it's just a matter of approaching both of those entities and. And presenting an analysis of their usage of the bins and um. And, you know, being able to talk with them about increasing the frequency. Some don't need to increase the frequency, but others do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um. I wanted to say that I'm really appreciating you working with Caltrans and, I mean SAM Trans and the bus stop. Issues and um, the work that is being done with um, City County in San Francisco. And in the area of the Birm and arranging for them to um. Do their part.
Right.
Yeah, the, the partnership there I think is important.
Definitely, thank you.
Um, anyone have anything else?
Um, yeah, thank you. I echo everyone's sentiments. Uh. As a very longtime member of the Beach Coalition, I've worked on a lot of these issues myself, the, the bins. Um, back in like two thousand nine, we tried to get them out um, of parking lots and I'm so. Happy to hear that they're being responsive to the city because they were not responsive to us. And they weren't even responsive to the property owners who were calling to try to get them removed. So that's, that's a major feat. Um, so thank you for doing it. And um, SAM Trans as well, I've, I've personally gotten cans replaced. Um, over on uh, Clarendon a few times and, and you're right Lorenzo. Because you've been working on this so closely with Chris, it's the right kind of cans in the right places. I was down at Lindemar today. And I mean, just throw a piece of trash in those cans when there's not even a flapping lid. Is absolutely pointless because it keeps coming back out or the Ravens that love uh, our cans. Particular, um, you know, have a ball. So I'm looking forward to seeing that and I really am very thankful for the relationship. The really good relationship that we have with Recology and um, being able to work this out and I'm happy that the city's involved, so thank you. And also thanks everyone for listening on the uh, the Birm insurance as well. And um, thanks Lorenzo.
My pleasure. We'll see what we can do about perhaps integrating the Ravens into the strategy as well.
Yeah, they may, might want to have a say in it.
Thanks Lorenzo.
My pleasure.
It's eleven.
Yep, so unless anyone has anything else, uh, that is our last item for the evening. I will uh, adjourn this evening's meeting at eleven PM. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.